Thank you. Good evening. It is September 11th. It's 6:00 PM. And I would like to just open up and say, I'd like to take a minute and recognize today is September 11th. And for those who lost their lives and the emergency personnel who worked so very hard to rescue those in the wreckage of the Twin Towers. If we could just take a moment of silence and to reflect and to honor them. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to welcome Tom Gothea, who is Chair of the Amherst School Board, who's joining us tonight to help answer any questions and participate in our conversation in regards to our facilities. And I guess the first thing we have is public input. Is there anyone? No? Anyone online? We posted the instructions?
We did.
Is there anybody who is interested in participating in public input? Please raise your hand and we will promote you to panelists. I don't see anyone. Okay. I don't see anyone right now. We'll have a public comment at the end and we'll be able to ask for more participation at that time. So we're here tonight to talk about our space utilization at Sohagen High School. And the first thing I'd like to do is recognize Mr. Chamberlain, Mike, are you doing?
And we're gonna kind of both kind of.
Okay. They're gonna do a brief introduction for us and then we'll get started with another presentation.
Yeah. So the way we're kind of framing this is what we hope to do is Steve and I will kind of talk through some of the things that we hope that are outcomes for this board as kind of previously discussed in previous meetings. And then we're gonna like turn it over to Stephanie and the Sohagen Cooperative School Board so they can, you know, try to talk through some things that they want. But really, we just want to take a minute or two to kind of go through some outcomes, some things we did to prep for this meeting. Make sure everyone is organized so we can have a fruitful and meaningful conversation. So at this point, I'll allow Steve to kind of run through the slide deck and we'll go from there.
So like we've done, we've had a number of retreats and tried to put some context and framing to it. Hopefully after tonight, we'll have a shared overall understanding or a general understanding of the current space utilization capacity at Sohagen High School. One of the reasons what prompted this, and I'm glad Tom's here, is we're gonna need a formal response to the Amherst School Board's letter regarding space for early childhood ed. There's also been some other ideas or concepts and make sure we address those other space use here at Sohagen High. Also, like we'd hoped that we, you know, take this opportunity to maybe do some survey, do some work to find out what youngsters are interested if we're talking about programming and whatever next steps that the board wants. So that's just, hopefully tonight we'll have that. Well, we're last board meeting and I think it was what Thursday maybe? So the last board between Thursday and here, there were some requests. So we created a shared folder. If you don't have access to it, let me know and I can share it but, or share a drive, actually should say it's a drive, not a folder. The Amherst School Board letter is in there. The current enrollment, you know, it's not October 1 enrollment, it was registration and attendance enrollment. A very old facility report, Gail, we want to make sure you had a copy of that. We've got the 2223, you've seen that before, the master schedule analysis and also the updated 2324 master schedule. Just as a reminder, enrollment, of course, enrollment doesn't really become, it's something we talked about until after drop ad, which is the next couple of weeks, and we're happy to provide it, but it's premature right now. The NESDEC enrollment projections is there. Something that I think I've been a little chagrined in not keeping in front of ours because my first year here, there actually was an article on the warrant to take a look at the science stuff. And last year, we kind of moved to a lot of watertight stuff and some other things, but it is real. Dana and I and maybe Stephanie will join and Mike, we have a commission visit by October 1. I have reached out. So the commission is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They are, Mike wrote a two-year, five-year report. Five? Thanks. Help me out there. Help me out. So they're making a visit, which in my experience, it's interesting and it's unusual to have a commission visit. So I've reached out to our connection there and obviously it's required by October 1 and Dana and I were working on that. And that hasn't got a lot of attention, but I think it's important that we bring it up tonight because it is facility related. And I did a quick memo AMS preschool room utilization, Anna, your request, it's in there. Hopefully you found that. So and if you need more resources and I also put Dan slides, I put in the shared folder a few minutes ago. Everybody okay? So just in context setting, and I appreciate a lot of conversations, a lot of, you know, half hour conversations at board meetings tonight, we're focusing on it. But just as, and I know you know this, but as the Sohagen Cooperative School Board, your priority is to Sohagen High School students and program, right? That's what you were elected to do. That really is the lens to look at all programmatic increases as how it impacts the Sohagen High School students and program. Certainly, and you guys have been very conscious about this, your stewardship of the tax experience, the tax burden is certainly real. And Sohagen for All, Mike has articulated a vision and we're trying to balance high academic expectation with true respect and value to the whole student. And so as a lens, what we do, I think that is the next vision Mike's talked about for the next couple of years. And one of the examples, what is that? How does a Sohagen for All manifests itself in the facility usage? And I think we're in this space. I think converting the learning commons to an academic support, enrichment, individual space to meet staff at all day to support kids is a perfect example. Students come into these spaces to get extra help or support tutoring and all continuum from remediation to enrichment. They get ELO support in this room. They get V-LAC support in these rooms. This is really a move to provide some space to support every kid on their pathway to their peace. And so just, just keep that in your lens as you can. And I think that's it. That's it. So I hope that helps, Mike. If I, you can kick me under the table as always, but that's just some context stuff. Cool beans? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that, putting things in context. It is important. I worked, Dan, first of all, I want to thank him publicly for an extreme amount of work he did. I'm putting some slides together, working on some data so we understand the usage of rooms and number of students in rooms, things like that. And I'm going to have him present through various slides tonight. So Dan. Oh, and one thing I want to ask is if everyone can just hold your questions to the end because I think otherwise we could get off track and never get back to finishing this. So I think if we finish the presentation, we'll visit each of the different scenarios from there. Make sense?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Stephanie, and thanks, everybody, for being here. Before I get started, I just want to thank Mike and Dana and Galen Trombley and everybody else who had a hand in putting together the master schedule, which is pretty much what I took this information from. And hopefully I put it together in a way that shows the way the school is being utilized. We can go to the first real slide. Why are we doing this? To gain a comprehensive perspective as to how the school is being utilized, to assess how the space may be, what spaces may be available for other uses, to review the efficiency and effectiveness of current space utilization. But we all know that the big elephant in the room is can we move the seventh and eighth grade into the cooperative? It's, I know it's something that affects probably some votes in March. So hopefully we can answer some of those questions and make people feel more comfortable about where we are. We know that enrollment's been declining at Sohagen pretty steadily. Well, over the last few years, it seems to have leveled off. We can go to the next slide. This is the required bar chart for every presentation. So this shows graphically that enrollment has dropped from about 1,000 in 2006, a little over 1,002, just under 700 now. Go to the next slide. I'm sure people are like thinking with enrollment dropped that much, it must be like a gas in a container. It's spreading out to take all the space. So we'll take a look at that and see if that's indeed the case. Go to the next slide. What can we do if we do find space? We can help. Maybe we can help the Amherst School District if we have enough space to alleviate some of their space constraints by any of these things, absorbing seventh, eighth grade, taking over the maker space or taking the preschool out of Clark and maybe creating a CTE program here at the high school. Or we stick to parts of, or all of Sohagen 2.0 and go to renovating portions of the school to best fit our environment and what's best for the high school students. We do the status quo. We do all the above. We do none of the above. That's, I mean, there is a little bit of a chicken and egg issue here or catch 22 where we have to decide something before Amherst and Mont Vernon can decide something, but we want to know what they think before we decide it. So hopefully we can talk and work through some of that issue as well. Next slide. These are the definitions that I used when I tried to figure out what, what spaces to include in what's in, what's available, what we have, what we don't have, what should be considered educational space, what shouldn't be. We could argue, we could probably get pretty deep into the weeds that this room should be, that room shouldn't be, this, you know, this facility is, this isn't. So these are things that I'm sure we can, you know, work out over some period of time, maybe not tonight. Educational capacity of school building means the sum of maximum number of students that can be simultaneously, simultaneously instructed in every educational space in the building. And that is defined as classrooms, but also laboratories, gymnasiums and libraries. Schools that I went to always used cafeteria. Other people I've talked to, their schools never used cafeteria. So whether that's educational space, the state definitions that I'm using say it's not that it's support space. So whether we could include that is another question we would have to ask ourselves. Next slide. Educational capacity according to the state means the sum of all students that can be simultaneously instructed in every space in the building. That means stuffing the school, every chair that can be placed in a room can, you know, can be fit in. And it's maximizing every inch of space in the school, all the classrooms, all the, you know, 32 square feet per student in every classroom. It would mean stuffing the school 100% full to meet the definition of fully utilized according to this. This defines educational space, general purpose classrooms, just a classroom that has, can be used for any instruction. Laboratories have special definitions, which means they can't be used for any kind of instruction or you can't teach what can be taught in a laboratory in any other room. Next space, next slide. Support space is rooms that were never intended to be classrooms and probably should never be classrooms. There are closets, offices, storage rooms, washrooms, kitchens, cafeterias, obviously, you know, utility rooms, mechanical rooms, things like that. Again, utilization rate is taking up every space in the school, including libraries and gymnasiums. Next. This is, if you want to get state building aid, you have to meet these requirements. For a kindergarten classroom, you have to have at least 1,000 square feet or 50 square feet, a minimum of 50 square feet per child, whichever is greater. So you're starting at 1,000 and moving up from there. For a middle school, it's 900 square feet per room or 36 square feet per child, whichever is greater. So minimum of 900 square feet. So when we talk about how big schools are, how big our proposed projects are, it's based largely on this. For a high school, it's 800 square feet per room or 32 square feet per student. So if you see room capacity listed, it's the square footage of the room divided by 32 square feet and that's the number of students that could possibly fit in that room if we stuffed, stuffed them full with every square inch available. Next. This just talks about science laboratories. I don't think it's, our laboratories, at least in the main building, meet those standards. In cases of the annex building where there says the labs should be 1,200 square feet minimum. The labs in the annex building are a little over 800 square feet, so they don't meet that minimum standard. When I calculated the minimum, the capacity of those rooms, I took the 1,200 square feet, subtracted whatever the square footage of the room is, divided by 60 and subtracted that number from the capacity of the room. Library and media centers, there's even a standard for that. And next slide. So if we stuff every square foot of this school full, fill every classroom with the maximum number of students that it can handle, we can probably get around 18 or 1900 students and that would be elbow to elbow crowded, 100% capacity, no more room for anything. That includes using the cafeteria and spaces where we might not want to put our kids. Next slide. Backing down to some other definitions. Includes classroom space calculated at 32 square feet per student. Does not include spaces like the auditorium, gym, library, cafeteria, school store. We might be able to get 1684 in here. So we would be about 40% utilized with our current enrollment numbers. Next number, next slide. So I think this is probably one of the more realistic levels of capacity, measurements of capacity. This includes all the general instruction spaces at maximum of 22 students per room. Labs at 24, that's what the state says, 1,200 square foot lab should be able to hold. Our labs are plenty big enough for that. Does not include auditorium, gym, library, cafeteria, which would probably be used for specials or whatever. Next slide. Now we're really getting, narrowing down the definition of educational space at 1,272. This takes out special education spaces that have been excluded from, from our room counts. It's, I think this is one of the best applications for our rooms and it's important to our children and the quality of our education. It's always something we need to review, but I don't think we would question that adequate space for this program is necessary. And next, and the narrowest definition, taking out, you know, anything that could be used that is not currently being used as educational space. Not just limiting it to general instruction classrooms, this would be 1,122 students. If we hit 1,122, that would be considered 100% capacity. And next slide. So we want to, it's a general rule of thumb that high schools should not be more than 80 to 90% full. You shouldn't try to stuff anymore. And there are different ways of looking at it. This is from the overall capacity of the school, not necessarily the number of classrooms. But if we take those numbers that we just saw and multiply them by 0.85, this would be the maximum number of students that we could fit in both buildings. Next slide. So how many classrooms do we have? If you, all in, everything that was a classroom, could be a classroom, has been a classroom, might be a classroom spaced, but was never, maybe it's a conference room now. Considering everything broadest possible definition of education space, it would be 76 spaces. We subtract the special education spaces, learning commons, rooms that are, have always been combined and, you know, that are multiple rooms that had a divider at one time, but the room has been configured in a way that the divider is not, you can't close the divider anymore. It's not going to be. There are two rooms again unless we change the configuration of the room, 103, 107, for example, in the annex. Seminar room.
Computer, that's the computer room?
That's the computer room. The seminar rooms, which are conference rooms, are not scheduled as classrooms right now. They can fit somewhere between 12 and 17 students each and they're in the annex. The school store, cafeteria, auditorium, gym. Technically, some of them are educational spaces according to state definitions, but we don't. We want to pull them out of this definition. The weight room used to be a wood shop, I believe. So that was educational space at one time. We'll take that out of this. Technology support is where all the computer systems are, the servers and all that for the school. We probably wouldn't mess with that too much. Total spaces to exclude would be 20. So now we're down to 56. One note is that the art room in the annex has, I believe has three dividers or had three dividers at one time. So it could be converted into four small, like 400 square foot rooms. But that's not anywhere in this. Next. So this is a very colorful spreadsheet. I don't know if the colors mean anything to anybody else. I'm not sure. I remember what they mean to myself. But, you know, the green is what used to be the school store. I don't know why I put it in there, but I just thought it was interesting. It's a kind of a coat room and what, an area that used to be the school store. It's off the fax room. The, the kind of yellowish colors are the spaces like the gym and cafeteria and, and library and the spaces. And if you go all the way down, you see the blues. Those are like the the lab spaces and just spaces where, that couldn't be used for other things. They have different configurations and they're not necessarily general purpose rooms or they've been reconfigured for something else. Let me go to my notes here. Make sure I know what I'm talking about. So this is the entire building and this is where we get the 76 rooms from and how we narrow it down to 56. And then if you go to the next slide, this is just looking at the main building. So we have about 50 spaces, including the gym and all that. It's 60,000 square feet of educational space, rough capacity of about 1,285 students. We limited it to 22 students per classroom maximum. It would be 1,100, capacity about 900 considering only classroom spaces. If you consider the excluded spaces and special ed, et cetera, it's down to about 615 students. Next space, next slide. I don't know why I'm saying that. This is the annex. The two, and two rooms in red are the, the conference rooms, the seminar rooms. The rooms in purple are the computer lab, which is two rooms, but used as one. And the smaller than state standard lab lab spaces are in the light blue at the bottom. We have about 26 spaces in the annex, 24 classrooms and the two conference rooms, about 22,000 square feet of classroom space out of the building that's about 40,000 square feet, which includes offices, mechanical rooms, hallways, bathrooms. In case you need to know what the missing space is. Rough capacity of about 619 students. We limited it to 22 per classroom. It's about 523. Next slide. Our rooms are small. We live up to the coalition of essential school standards. The rooms were designed for a low number of students. Which many agree is, is, you know, an educational goal and a lot of schools would envy us. About half the rooms are slightly over 3,800 square feet, except for the labs, which are over 1,200. About half the rooms are less than 800 square feet with about 23 of those 33 less than 700 square feet. And we have four small rooms that are less than 600 square feet and those include the conference rooms, the breakout rooms and one other one that's not coming to mind right now. Most conservative estimate is we're about, at about 62% capacity. How can we be out of space? This. Let's go to the next one. These are the subjects that are taught, number of sections that are taught every semester, 249 sections of classes, including those quote included here. These are the subjects, not necessarily the exact specific classes. You can see we have 13 AP courses included in there. Art, business, computer science, language arts, senior project has a room, social studies, wellness, et cetera. Next slide. This is the number of students that are on campus in a classroom every period. About 98%, 96, is that 96 or 98? I'm too far away. 96% of students are on campus first period every day and the low, lowest number of students that are on campus looks like it's about third period, 84%. So we're doing a pretty good job of keeping kids in the school these days. Juniors and seniors have off-campus privileges. They have open campus. They can leave or come when they come and go as they need to. When they don't have to be here when they don't have a class and they can leave when they, when they don't have a class. Next. This is where we get into a lot of subjective opinions. What is a classroom? What is not a classroom? The 70 at the top is educational space according to the state. And the classrooms in use are the ones that are listed as having a class scheduled in at any point during the day. Let's see. So we can get, looking at the whole building, we're at about 57% utilized, the whole, in both buildings, the entire campus. We have about between 20, 40, we have about between 25, 45 and down to as low as 37, 36 classrooms utilized between both buildings over the course of the day. Next slide. This is comparing the annex and the main building. We have 17 classrooms available in the main building and 18 in use in the annex. If you wanted to move all of the students in the annex into the main building, you'd have to look at probably cutting, rearranging the periods. You'd have to look at the classroom sizes. Can, are the 17 classrooms that might be available, big enough to accommodate all of the students in the 18 classes in the middle school, I mean, in the annex. You would be making the high school around 90% utilized, the main building about 90% utilized. The annex would be about 75% utilized if we put 16 classrooms of seventh, eighth graders into it. Again, this is just, we could get deep into the weeds and probably go all night on a discussion of what could go where. And I think it's something that we need to be aware of that these 17 rooms include small rooms, breakout rooms that might only hold 10 students at most. So because it's, there's a room there, does not mean that it suits the needs of anybody that would come over from the annex. So emptying the annex and putting them into the high school would, would be a tough project to take on. It would take some time and some effort and energy. Might it be possible and worth looking into? That's up to the board here. Next. Answering the question of, one more down after this. Answering the question of how spread out are the students? I don't think they're terribly spread out. We have 15, we have 34 classes first semester, 38 that are fewer than 15 students, which is about 12% of the sections, 12 to 14% of the sections. We have a few that are less than 10, about 5% or 6% of the sections that are available. Considering the classes involved, I don't think that's a terrible number, terribly small number. So we haven't, being at 60% utilization rooms and having 5% with 10 or fewer, we're being pretty efficient at allocating rooms to courses, not throwing kids everywhere and spreading out like, like a gas in a container, like many I think I feared. Go to the next slide. These are the classes that are fewer than 15 students. I know it's probably small for us to read here, but if I can pull it up on my screen. Things like advanced programming, some of the AP classes, some of the math classes, advanced classes, Spanish, AP Spanish. The novice classes where students may have, they may be switching to a different language. We have to offer, we may have smaller classes, but I think it's important for us to offer languages where colleges require two years and I think foreign language is an important subject. Again, there aren't very many that are below you know, a reasonable number of students considering the courses that are being taught. Next. Nope, one, one too far.
Sorry.
Okay. And I think, you know, if we want to ask questions or get into deeper discussions, get into the weeds of some of these issues. This is probably where we do it, right?
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thanks for that. Going over that quickly. Have you saw the spreadsheets he put together to get to these numbers? It was, it was, it was a lot, but at least it gives us, I think, a summary of what it looks like in our building currently. And I hope everyone had a chance of, if you're sure if you want to look at the details, we'll be happy to sit down with you and go over those spreadsheets because it was really hard to see on those screens, but you know, reach out and let one of us know. So at the, at the board level, what I'd like to take up is a discussion of some of the options that have been brought forward. And because we have Tom here and to make sometime efficient, and I know he's on a little bit of a deadline this evening, I'd like to address the preschool letter first. If that the request is to see if If um that the request is to see if we were would be interested in housing preschool here. And I just kind of want to open it up. I do want to make sure we're not talking over each other. So please raise your hand. I'll keep a a list and we'll go one by one if you have something to add. Um, and it's talking, you know, you can talk pros and cons about bringing it in or the benefits to or The concerns of things we'd have to look into. And we'll address it that way. So is there anybody who has comments about looking at the preschool letter? Anyone wants to start off or we? Tom, is there anything you want to address first or you just want if you're here to answer questions? Okay. Some of the things I'll I'll just I'll just bring up that I look at preschool Uh, for it to work, one of my thoughts is it would have to become part of the cooperative because otherwise you're starting to Figure out rent, how to allocate electricity and water and all those things. And do we want to get into the weeds of that? Which means it would become part of the cooperative. If it becomes part of the cooperative, then we got to talk, you know, definitely additional costs. Because now we are looking at administration because our administration is a high school administration, not a preschool, so a guidance counselor. Um, you'd have to look at adding Additional costs for those sorts of things, which can does concern me. Uh, because we know the taxpayers are starting to say, hey, we're tapping out on how much we're willing to give you guys. So if we're adding costs that don't exist today. Is that where we want to go? Is that the right direction that's does the best thing for our students here at the high school? That's where one of my concerns is. Multiple.
Um, I'll go, I guess. Back in the silence here. Um, so I wrote down some thoughts on that too. I You know, in the spirit of serving all students, you know, through that lens, how does that Um, idea serve students? I it serves a few students. I think there's thirty or so preschoolers. There's an unknown if any number of high school students who are interested in such a program. So that it's it's of limited value through that lens from my perspective. I think it would require some level of construction, at least for play facilities. We learned from Ellen, uh, meeting or two ago That you wouldn't have to retrofit bathrooms and such like that. She claimed. I presume that's true, but You certainly would have to have some kind of outdoor play facilities that don't currently exist here. It might be very difficult for Mount Vernon to participate. I'm not qualified to speak for them, but coming far away For two or three hours to then go back uh without s- district transportation might be a limiting factor for their Uh, excitement of participation. Um, and I would say that if a high school student was interested in such an early education program, we'd have models in place that can enable that pathway. We have ELOs as an example, and if someone wanted to put together a program, I'm certain that We could work with the people at the Clark School to make that happen for that student. So i- if that student arrives, I we we have a pathway for them already. So for those reasons, and when we compare that to some of the other alternatives, I'm not in favor of Uh, moving preschool into the annex at this time.
Mr. Vayou.
Do we know how many classrooms would be required?
Well, in the 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 sheet that they prepared, there's three classroom spaces. But my wonder is, would you you'd need some sort of administrative person, a guidance counselor, Some sort of, because our even like I I I think of ours Speech pathologist, all those do, are they qualified with high school people? Are they qualified to work with preschool? I don't know. Are they at max capacity? More people would have to be hired? Those are questions I I would have to explore.
There uh currently it's uh three classrooms and a program room. Um, and all the related service providers would be contracted and you know they'd come in for 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 whatever hours. Some, it'd be some of, yeah, and yeah, we'd have a coordinator of the preschool, so there'd be a little bit of office space.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So, Tom, is it currently, is is Mount Vernon currently part of the preschool program? Okay, so right now it's just Amherst. What do you know? Do you know what Mount Vernon is doing with their preschool kids? Like, are they?
Steve would know better than I do.
So um, the only um, a special, the special education Us identified students who child find from Mount Vernon attend the Amherst preschool program as part of the special education program, but a non-identified youngster. Um, they do private preschool.
Okay, we're talking about the special education preschoolers. We're not talking about opening up like townwide.
Correct.
Right, but if it becomes part of the cooperative, it automatically would include Mount Vernon because they are part of our cooperative. But but I guess what I'm hearing is that the special education preschoolers from Mount Vernon are coming to AMS.
Correct, but what happens in?
Oh, not AMS are coming to the Amherst district.
So uh, the Amherst preschool program, uh, you need, in order to run a preschool program, we need a balance of identified You know, identified kids and non-identified are typically development kids.
Okay.
So right now there are Amherst students, uh, typically developed attending our preschool program.
Got it.
And like most communities. Now, um, Mount Vernon, it's um, and we have a meeting this week in Mount Vernon. We are looking at a facility study, but uh, what And that's one of the questions about looking at uh to have a A special education preschool program on campus or somewhere else. So there is some interest In developing a balanced program for Mount Vernon. Don't know how much yet because the process is. So There are regular typically, they're called typically development littles and Amherst who attend the Amherst preschool and identified Amherst.
Okay.
And there are identified Mount Vernon students.
So we're Amherst heavy, I guess, because we don't have typically identified.
Correct.
Typically identified littles coming over from Mount Vernon also. If it became part of the district, presumably pulled typically
Great.
Identified as well as the special ed kids from Mount Vernon to balance and that would be throughout the districts. Okay. Um, right now it's three classrooms, Tom?
Correct.
Okay, do, I mean, maybe this is just a, maybe I'm just being dense here, but do pre-K kids have a guidance counselor?
They have access, um, they have some access to a social worker at Clark School, so it'd be some access, working with parents and so
Okay.
Uh, I I thought it'd be more in the social worker end of the student support services versus a school counselor.
And presumably because we have a number, it would include a number of children with special needs. There's a fair amount of built-in additional supports to the classrooms already. Like paras? Yeah, like paras, additional teachers, smaller classes, whatever we need. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, because I guess I'm just, I'm I'm struggling a bit with this piece of it being a a big additional administration and I don't, I don't see that. Um, I will say one of the things I really like about it is I talked with the principal Bo Back when he interviewed for the superintendent spot, um, they do this uh with the kindergarten, not the pre-K, kindergarten. Is it preschool? Okay, it's a preschool. And it was littles, little, little kids. And he says it's very, I was like, that's fascinating to me. Said it was very well received. The kids get along very well. It's very, it's mixed support. I know that one of the letters we had Opposing it referenced the fact that only one student has gone to the Nashua program. But I think to me, there's a difference between Do I stay in my regular high school, my town high school where I'm doing my sports and all my stuff and I drive the bus and all that, the one right here in my town and take a class In early childhood development, early education development right there within my school Versus am I deciding to, you know, change my, I mean, if I'm going to Nashua, that's a significant change in my overall curriculum. I mean, I have to take time out to make sure I can do those trips. I'm dropping other classes. So I'm not sure that's comparing apples to oranges because we're not talking about is there a Huge number of South Heagan kids who would want to stop taking classes and all of a sudden do nothing but work in the In the early education program, but it would be an opportunity for um, you know, small numbers of kids, each each class To sign up and do that as an education. Um, I think we have room for it. Um, I think, and I, you know, I I think we have I mean, I like the I like the idea of doing something to help alleviate the space concerns at AMS. Uh, not AMS, the whole
Yeah.
Clark, Wilkins, everywhere, the entire, the entire program there. Um, and I mean, I I I think it's, yes, I mean, sure, we'd have to There would be some financial investment, but I think it's smaller than some of the other financial investments. That some of the other opportunities um that we're going to be discussing would involve. And if if we can do that, so as I understand it, if those kids came here, kindergarten alone could stay in Clark. Which would mean a smaller building.
And we're already looking at a smaller building over there anyway on the site of Wilkins for one through five. We have four different options coming to us from Banwell by the end of next month. Which will include two build the suit options. So customizing it one through five, what we need, similar to what we had, you know, last year. And we also have two one through five renovations, whether it's adding a wing, adding a second building, adding a second floor possibility. So we have two options coming for that. So we'll have four different options, looking at a one through five on the site of Wilkins right now. And this was brought up, well, how do we alleviate space at Clark? And you can take preschool, if you take preschool out of there, you have plenty of room for kindergarten.
Okay, that that was gonna be my next question when you said that. So then if 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 this doesn't happen, you still have the problem about what happens with Clark as far as making enough space.
Yeah, because right now in our 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 multipurpose room truly is a multipurpose room. You have, you know, gym, art, li- everything is in that one room. Um, you can start to space some of that out and and you can potentially look at different scheduling options if you have space where you could do things at the same time. I mean, there are countless options you could do if you had more space.
And one of the, one of the, I mean, we got a letter in support or a speaker in support and a letter in opposition. And one of the concerns in the letter that we got as an opposition um was that we shouldn't be looking for, I guess, a temporary solution. Um, but I'm not, I guess I'm not viewing this as a temporary solution. I didn't take that as a temporary solution that you are asking for. Like, long term, do we want to make room here and have a have the pre-K here?
Yeah, I think this is something that could benefit. If if it were to involve Mark Vernon, it would certainly benefit all three inde- independent, or at least benefit Mount Vernon and Amherst. Uh, South Heagan would potentially gain some sort of tuition impact, you know, financially, again, from the same taxpayer base. Um, but you would have, you know, it'd be a long-term option, I would think, because we wouldn't touch Clark. We would keep Clark as it is right now, which I think Probably has some community support. I don't think they want to see it turned into apartments or other certain aspects anyway. So if you're keeping it status quo, I think people can deal with that.
How do the pre-K kids from Mount Vernon get to, what's what's the transportation situation for?
It's all self-provided, right, Steve?
Remember, all the Mount Vernon kids are special education students, so we provide transportation.
Okay.
The uh, uh, the typically developed students provide their own transportation.
Okay.
Only special education students have transportation to a preschool program.
So that would not be district-wide, that would not be a substantial difference. I mean, it'd be coming here instead of going there, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't change significantly what's already.
With me, was I clear on that? It's only regular ed who.
No, that's what, yeah. Alright. I think it's great. Anybody else? Or go, I'm alone. Mr. Vayou?
Just want to point out that we have between twenty five and thirty five rooms open Uh, we have between twenty five and thirty five rooms open during the course of the day, taking thirty four, thirty five preschool kids is Just a drop in the bucket for As far as the the issues that, the crowding issues at the elementary schools. We could do a lot more, uh, I think. So if we took the preschool as part of a bigger Offering. Do a lot more.
Can I ask you a question about this space, the space and and from your slides? And I'm looking at the one online, which I'm not sure is exactly the same as the one you you showed us, but
You want to go back?
Yeah, could we pull up like where he where he did the, we've got X spaces and then if we take this out, it's this many spaces Early on, where and I thought we ended up with a number that was like fifty six. If we take out.
Any idea what slide number?
Do you know what I'm talking about, Dan? Yeah. Uh, slide, maybe twenty one? Oh, not that one. Oh, yeah, he really.
Yeah.
He reordered it from what I had. Alright, yeah, that, that.
The only.
So, so I guess this is part of what I don't understand from your numbers, Dan, and just help me understand them. Because, and I'll tell you first that what what I did, much more rudimentary, does not look this fancy. But I took the utilization report. I kind of didn't worry about advisory, because I think there are small spaces. I mean, if you look at the utilization report we got. Right, it's during lunch. They're actually staggered, so there's solutions like you could have, you know, you could have one room that was being used, I think, for advisory at the beginning And then one at the end, where the kids went to lunch at the opposite times. There, you, we could use some of the smaller spaces, like We can figure out places to put advisory. So I'm not, I I kind of took the advisory that is the one that makes it look like there's only three rooms out of it. And on average, we're, you know, we're looking at ten to sixteen rooms that aren't in in use. And then When I went from my walkthrough, I looked at, okay, what are the things That we could repurpose into spaces? Like, how could we make a space? And there are some things that we could, if we wanted to, get rid of. And I guess we could get rid of the weight room. It would need some significant work, but we could make it into something else or or remove it if we had to. We could get rid of the school store, though that would be a tiny classroom. Um. Or maybe it just looks just, it's oddly shaped. It's an oddly shape. Like, it would not be, it is not really, if you look at it It is hard to imagine a significant number of kids in there effectively learning. Um, we've got some tiny little spaces like one oh three that I guess if we had a class with six people in it or something, those could be used. But I look at, you know, I don't know. Maybe ten classrooms we could create if we had to take, and that would be like taking like the big art room and dividing it up into three classrooms.
First period, first semester, we have the art room. Two art rooms. Open first period, green screen room.
Mm-hmm, yep, green screen room is on my list.
Conference room two oh two, which is a small.
Which is a small seminar. I don't know how you get seventeen kids in that.
Two science labs, A two fourteen and two fifteen, it would be twelve kids in that.
Right.
Two twenty two is is over five hundred square feet, so you could.
It would could be a regular size, absolutely.
Two science labs in the annex, uh, a science lab, three science labs in the annex, the other conference room. Uh, classroom one oh two, breakout room one oh three, which is small, has a capacity of about ten kids maybe. Uh, fax room, which is an enormous room. School store.
Are we going through? What?
Weight room, chorus room, band room, and the learning commons.
But then you're getting rid of facts.
Two oh five, classroom two oh nine, classroom two oh seven are all open.
I mean, I guess we need.
There are rooms, science labs, engineering lab.
Understand that. I mean, I come out at like Twenty rooms that we could make that aren't in in a in use at any given time. And I think you've got what, twenty six? What do you say? Are free at any? You had at the end, thirty plus. I don't get thirty plus.
I just.
Because, yeah, right, but you got to get rid of all of those, right? I mean, it's it's thirty plus if we get rid of All the things those school, those rooms are currently being used for.
Those are in. The ones I read off are empty right.
Okay.
First period. You got to look at what rooms are empty every period. They're all, they change over the course of the day. You don't have to swap all rooms somewhere. Teachers have their own classrooms, four periods and then four periods of classrooms that's empty.
Okay, so let's look at this. How many are you showing open? How many are, how many are showing open in period one? A week? No, wait, let's just ask him for a second, because I'm I'm comparing this over the master schedule. The one is, I mean, they had seventeen originally in the list we got.
That I went through and ticked and tied everything and made sure that everything matched.
I agree. I mean, there's.
First period.
Okay. So it's not that different than mine. I mean, other than I, you know, because I think I think we could add in about ten more.
But, yeah, and this doesn't include
But it.
Some other spaces.
Doesn't keep pulling some space. So the other, I mean, I think what we need to talk about is the seventh and eighth grade issue, right?
Which we're gonna get to, but I want to resolve this one first, just because If if we're ready to resolve it, because Amherst is trying to plan and if there's If we're leaning one way or the other, I'd like to be able to communicate to them which way we're leaning to help them move forward.
So then I think there's two questions, though. Like, if we can't bring seventh and eighth grade over, are we interested in this? If, you know, versus if we can bring seventh and eighth grade over, which of course does involve Mount Vernon and everyone agreeing to that, but Um. So I mean, I think they're tied.
They they could be.
Yeah.
They could be. Um, the one thing I just want to clarify, because I know you you made a comment about not, you know, not a lot of cost with admin. I guess what I was looking at was, you probably need a social worker and you probably need some sort of a vice principal or something, because we don't have that expertise. That's two people and those costs of those salaries and stuff are going to add up to Probably two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollars alone On that. And we've already been pushed back from the community on adding costs and those those positions don't exist today At any of the schools.
But they're also not going to be, they're only going to be split between Amherst and Mount Vernon. They're not going to be paid for by the South Heagan Board, so you're not actually.
Depends, it depends on how we do it.
Yeah, but if it's, but if it's preschool, I don't under. Yeah, but if it's, but if it's preschool, I don't under, are you gonna use them for other students too?
Will become part of the cooperative, or are we running space to Amherst for this?
Cuz when we were talking about as a CTE, it stops being an Amherst program.
Yeah.
But does it, though?
Well, that's the, there's a lot of questions.
I mean, it's no difference if they went to, if you, if you were to think about operating this just as a private business, I realize it's not. But if this were a private business that South Heagan rented out space for X dollars per room for the, for the year, you figure out rent, it's no different than, um, trying to, you know, the, the principle of rent. You rented out the building for a hundred dollars per classroom per month. Obviously, that's not the number. You build in all the, the costs that you would need in there, and then we just provide all the staffing. Cuz you're gonna have teachers that are gonna have to be impacted by this, potentially leaving, uh, their current collective bargaining agreement, having to be rolled over into the PPC, which is an entirely different structure that's gonna see pushback. Same for seventh and eighth grade, but in a much larger scale. Uh, you're gonna have, obviously, the guidance counselors and, and staffing there. I think our administration in the elementary school level has, and maybe Steve can speak about this more, but I think that they've thought, cuz we brought this up with them. They, they think that there's a way to make this work administratively, whether it's one day a week, somebody goes over there. If it's the teachers have meetings over in, uh, Clark Wilkins, you know, if we have to shorten the day or adjust the day, so they can meet at Clark Wilkins at the end of the day, or at Clark School to have debriefs with the principals. I think you can cover that administratively. I don't think you need a permanent resource here. We already have, uh, you know, there may be an additional social worker, but I think that you're having more students with potentially Mont Vernon kids coming in. So you're going to partly cover that with tuition. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of ways that you can just run this like a, a business. And then you can have the Amherst, the South Heagan kids just take this as the course like they would if they went to work at kinder care down the road in Nashville. I don't, I don't see how it would be any different.
Well, so then, if that's how we were doing it, so it's still an Amherst program just being done in this space, then there's no real benefit above just sending South Heagan students who are interested in that over to Clark School.
I mean, other than the fact that they have to travel a lot further to get there, it's not in-house.
But not a huge advantage for giving up, ah, significant buildings.
I mean, it sounds like you have fifty-eight rooms that are not being used every period of the day, so.
And I do like, we.
Twenty-five, whatever the number is.
And that, I, I'm not exactly sure. I really would have liked to hear from people in this building if that sounded accurate, wherever that is happening.
Yeah.
That probably would have been helpful for me before we got into this. I don't know. Okay. Because, yeah, if we have thirty-seven rooms that are empty, then it's much more spacious here than I was aware.
Then you're just an old-timer that has a huge house and you're renting out the college kids on campus, right? I mean, it's essentially what the equivalent of it would be.
Unless there's a better way to deliver education to our community, that, you know, the nine to twelve that are already in the building.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, obviously, we need to look at that. One of the, one of the things that I know the letter of opposition we got from Jeannie said, you know, she, her one thing was, is this a temporary solution? Um, and her other.
I'm sorry, did you say she, this is a temporary solution?
About that. Just talked about it, like, you shouldn't just be doing this as a temporary.
Understood.
You're gonna have to like redo bathrooms and all that, which we don't really need to do, but we're gonna have to do all that just to move them back in two years or something. And I, and I, again, I don't see that that's what you're asking. I mean.
No, I think we would envision this.
No one thinks of the brick school as a temporary place for, it's, you know, they're renting from you and it's a long-term rent, and that's what's happening.
I mean, we would envision this as a potentially long-term solution unless five years from now, Mont Vernon backed out, or, you know, something were to happen where we lost a huge amount of population out of, uh, Clark School. But, I mean, this would be a long-term solution, uh, in our minds.
Yeah. Um, if it was done as a rent instead of adjoining of the, of, in the cooperative, then there would be the issue of, you know, we'd solve the issue of the overhead of the administration, I guess. Cuz, cuz, yeah, you know, I understand that we wouldn't necessarily hire a bunch of administration to manage three preschool classrooms. Um, but I, I don't know. I, I still think it's, I still think it's a good solution. I think we've got the space. I think we've got the space in a way that could be done without having to do some sort of significant overhauling of spaces and issues and all that. I mean, we could do it when, when we walked, you could do it in the bottom of the back of the annex. You know, we looked at an area there that would, that would work, that would be a little bit out of the way. Um, I think it could be done, and I think it would help the overall, um, town situation. Oh, I know what I was gonna say. So Jeannie had mentioned also, look, if you've got space, think about offering additional classes and additional options for the high schoolers and, you know, the nine through twelve that we have here. But it's not just that. I mean, it's easy. We can't just sit here and say, okay, great, we got twenty spaces. Let's, you know, let's add fifteen different programs of study, because that's gonna have a huge financial impact. That involves teachers for every one of those additional programs of study. So, I mean, sure, that would be lovely. Um, but, but we also have, have a budget we have to work in. And I see this as a way that helps, helps our budget a little bit, because some of the unused space, we start getting some money to offset those costs and helps the town in their overall situation by making, um, some of the space more available. So, that is my view on it. It sounds like I might be in the minority, but that's my view on it.
Okay.
Anybody else have comments?
Oh, you're still in preschool?
Yeah, well, yeah, so I was gonna ask, we want to stay on preschool? Or do, do people feel that if, you know, let's talk about seventh and eighth grade, and then we can revisit the preschool option, if that makes sense, or?
I just, before we moved on to, to any more discussion of space, the numbers you presented are very different from other numbers that I had heard about what space might be available in the building. And I think it would be helpful to hear a little bit from people who are in the building, but if I'm alone, then.
Then put a slide up to show, that showed an example of rooms that are available.
No, so I, I heard from you. I wanted to hear from the people who are here every day, if what you're portraying is an accurate picture. Since we're not here. I, just cuz it, that sounds like there's a lot of.
I just wanna be clear, not all these rooms are, are appropriate for education, man. So, or wouldn't be appropriate for every classroom. So we, it would depend on what was available and what was needed. But, yeah, Mike would.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
You wanna give?
I'm gonna allow Dana to kinda get into the, the development of the master schedule, because in the last, uh, three years, she's been personally taking the lead on the development of the master schedule, working with, uh, council director and, and Galen as, as we built that the last couple of years. However, I can tell you, like, you know, there's space, there, there are spaces that are on paper that are available. But there's some nuances of what we do as, as a school in twenty-twenty-three and how we use our spaces from, you know, art room spaces to computer lab spaces, to saber-flex spaces, to school store, to the learning commons, that unless, you know, you're in the building on, on a regular basis, it, it's unclear about the rhythm and the flow of how the spaces are used. And, um, I can have Dana talk a little bit about, you know, the direction of South Heagan High School and, and, and the process of the development of the master schedule around, you know, space utilization.
Sure. So, um, first of all, I wanna say, I don't think that, I don't think what was presented was inaccurate. Um, I think it's, it's just maybe not sufficient to understand how the building gets used every day. So I think all of those, I think all of that is true. It's just one piece of the puzzle. Because sometimes when you're considering the square footage of a space, for example, I'm very terrible with the numbers in this building, but maybe two-two-four, which is our engineering room, is a really big room. But so much of that is taken up by all of the equipment. And so if we're accounting for that in the square footage of where we could put kids, what would we then do with all of that stuff? Right? If we turn the art room, which is a big space in the annex, right, used to be cafeteria, if we turn that into separate classrooms, what do we do with the pottery program that's kind of blossoming here? And where do we put all the wheels, which we're trying to buy more, because so many kids wanna take that class? So what, what do we do with, with some of those things? And I think what I heard from, um, Mr. Vayou really was, like, not every single space, just cuz it says that there's a room available, is an appropriate room for a classroom. So I, I appreciate that. Um, I think some of the other things, it's really, and Mike can attest to this, because we had the conversation many times over the last several years. Um, South Heagan is really unique, and we do a lot of exciting, wonderful things. Building a master schedule is like playing three-D chess, because there's so many variables. And so when we're building the master schedule, the rooms actually do become a huge factor into what we can offer and when we can offer it and how we can offer it. For example, every humanities classroom has to be in a room that has the ability to pull the wall open, so that we can offer the open wall experience that has come, that, that, that we've come to be a cornerstone of going through the humanities program at South Heagan. That's just one thing. Of course, if we wanna say those are gonna be two separate classrooms and you just have to go where there's room, like, yeah, of course we can do that. It's just not going to be without its effects on what we can offer and how. Um, the other piece definitely becomes down to staffing, um, choice, offerings, because the bottom line is we can't have every class offered during every single period of the day, because maybe, you know, Sunny teaches Core Math One and Core Math Two, which can't teach both at the same time. And so the number of, of teachers that we have and the number of preps that they can teach and the number of unique classes that they can teach at any given time is also a variable. And so also dictates how our space gets used. Um, sure.
Pause you there for one second.
Sure.
Before you, as you get your thoughts together. The, the other moving parts about this is, you know, the agreement between the PPC and, and the school board. It's, as Dana was mentioning, I think people really underestimate number of courses, student load, unique preps, different preps. And that is a very complicated agreement as you're trying to build a master schedule. To keep all those things in mind. So the space would have an impact on that agreement and how you would, you know, implement that agreement as you develop the master schedule. I mean, that would have to go hand in hand, so we have to keep that in mind a, as we change the variables. As Dana said, not that it can't be done, but it's just another thing that has to be considered, you know, as, as, as it was drawn up. So I didn't mean to cut you off, but you hit a really good point there, that, that, that can't be underestimated.
I think, um, another thing is, I, I appreciate the state minimums. I think it's super important for us to keep them in mind. We also don't put kids in rows here. We also know that that's not what's best for kids. And so we're configuring classrooms in a way that might take up more than that space. And like, like Mr. Vayou said, some of these rooms, like two oh-six, those are small rooms, um, where we already have twenty kids and it feels real tight. And so, so, so I, I know that by the square footage, the numbers seem to work, but by, by the operational practices, it's just not, it's not what's, it's not, it doesn't, doesn't work for the best learning environment for the kids. Um, I will say that when I walk through the hallways here, I don't think, uh, I don't feel tight in this building. I don't feel like we're on top of each other, but I also don't feel empty. And so, and so I, I do not dispute the utilization being at fifty-six percent or whatever we said it was at, right? The numbers are the numbers. I just don't think it tells the full story of how we're using the building, because it doesn't feel empty during the day. And there's certainly times of the year where we're in a huge crunch for spaces. Every time we administer the PSATs or the SATs or NEEWAW, and we're trying to, you know, create the best test-taking environment, we're shutting off, we're putting all the kids that are taking tests in the annex and moving kids into this building, and it's really hard to make sure that we're able to do that. Um, advisory is another time. Not every space is great for an advisory, because we've got, you know, cat dissections happening today in science, and we're not gonna put an advisory in there. It just doesn't work for that day. And so the flexibility to be able to move things around is really important to us, but also it's not, it's never easy. Um, and then, of course, we do have times of the year where every advisory is happening at the same time. Um, and again, that's unique, but that, then it, it does become a crunch. Where do we, where, where are we putting the kids? And I, I, you know, uh, yes, of course, the rooms in the annex, our computer lab, we have our computer lab. We also have the Mac lab. We also have the green screen room. Sure, we could take those spaces and make them classroom spaces. Then what would we do with those programs? Because there's not space in here for those programs currently, the way that they're designed over there. So then what I, what would we, what would we do? Um, so as someone who's in the building every day, again, I do not dispute those numbers. It just feels, it feels differently than fifty-six percent when we're getting into how we have to operate. And if we wanna say we need to operate differently, then that's the charge. We have to figure out how to operate differently. But some of the things that we've come to, that have come to be the way we do school here will change.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so I just wanna take a, a field. John, I saw you were going to say something. Do you want, is there something you want?
Yeah.
Is it about the preschool piece or? Okay, yeah, cuz I was gonna say, do we, where do we stand? Do we want to move on from the preschool? Talk about seventh and eighth grade, come back to discuss both, but go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, like, what problem are we trying to solve with our space? That, I think if we have a few, view on what our problems are, and we can reach agreement on that, then the solutions may become more, um, worthy of further discussion, no matter what challenges may, may be presented in order to find some solutions around those. I appreciate the challenges, by the way. I believe they're real. Here's what I believe, can see the current problems are. We have unsatisfactory academic achievement in the current middle to high school transition. Steve Chamberlain was hired to help us solve this problem, I do believe. We have a declining acad- academic achievement. It gives it to be our SAS, um, data for a decade. Eighth grade proficiency in the two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen timeframe was greater than ninety percent in ELA and greater than eighty percent in math. Today, it's less than fifty percent in both. It, there's a dip in eighth grade academic achievement vis a vis the ninth, the NEEWAW testing scores. I looked for the chart that was at the, uh, April eleventh Amherst meeting, but I couldn't find, there was a presentation on that. I couldn't find it online. Um, there was an articulated need from nearly every, uh, faculty presentation that we enjoyed last year for vertical integration into the high school. This is local data, and we had a graduation requirements group come back with their primary recommendation was to make a mandatory writing course for ninth graders to fill a, a, a proficiency gap. That's a real problem. That is a high school problem. That's real and in need of some type of solution. Outside of the high school, clearly there are significant space needs at the Wilkins School. So, so far, been unsuccessful with the plans to, to build a new school. Um, we know today that there's a better solution for seventh, eighth graders that Mont Vernon is seeking, given what their, their voters chose last year. Those are real problems. So, um, but a structural change i- in, in how South Heagan can do, what it can do to get kids prepared for high school, can spend resources and, and culture. I mean, I don't wanna get into the argument here so much in, in, in support of seventh and eighth. But when we see the problems that we have, I look at a preschool program coming in and I ask myself, how does that, does that best solve our problems? And I don't see it. It doesn't save a ton of space with only three classrooms, um, relative to other ideas. It doesn't serve as many students, um, by far. So I'm, I'm not inclined to agree with that at this time, given what I've seen as a, you know, fourteen-hundred-capacity school where we've got less than seven hundred, oh, three hundreds. We got about eleven hun, or, uh, a thousand, ten fifty students. We still got three hundred students to grow, at least as a, on a growth scale. So I ask myself, what can we do, um, to help solve our problems? And we are, like Dana said, I believe, I believe it's true. There's gonna be some choices being made about how we're currently doing things. Luckily, we have a history of changing the way we've done things to solve problems, and now we're faced with a, with a serious one. Um, and I, I don't know that the preschool solution solves our problems.
It, there's one thing I just, I do wanna say, cuz I know you've said it before, John, you and I have had this discussion, but you cannot guarantee that the outcomes from seventh and eighth grade would be better if you pulled them into South Heagan. And I think it's a little disingenuous and we gotta be a little careful what you're saying in regards to the teachers that are teaching those students now. Because, yes, we're working on instruction practice here. We have things to work on. And we know there's things that need to be worked on in the middle school, but to say that we are going to have better outcomes for seventh and eighth graders here, you cannot guarantee that. And I think you gotta be very, very careful mentioning that.
Uh, firstly, I appreciate your position on that. I did not guarantee success, academically success. What, what is different in a seventh and eighth grade model in the cooperative is, uh, full resources of, of the cooperative. A kid can accelerate. A kid has access to the guidance program. A kid will have, uh, access to the culture, uh, to a high school culture, to a, a time in their life when they're transitioning into young adulthood, where they, they can have agency. They can learn responsibility and take account. That's the high school culture. They can have agency. They can learn responsibility and take account. That's the high school culture, not an elementary school culture. That's what Sohegan can offer the cooperative. That is a little different than the current status quo. Um, I think that'll benefit students with, if, if a seventh and eighth grader started to talk with the guidance department. And knew on day one of their high school, on ninth grade, kind of like what their courses were doing, what, why they were taking the courses. They had a little map, a little roadmap, a goal for that. Um, I think that would benefit those students. I think that's, that's a change in the dynamic. There's, there's other compelling reasons to do this too, but from a student's success point of view, I think it sets them up. With the resources and the culture of the high school and the care with the primary mission of getting them ready for their permanent record. Is, um, is a huge promise for their success.
Can I just comment for the Amherst School Board? My ride may be leaving earlier tonight because of the rain and the flash flood warnings. So. I, I will say that the, not speaking entirely for the board, but the conversations we have had, there's very little appetite to do this. And, and talking with administration, it may not be what's best for kids, but getting away from that. Twenty odd teachers and staff you'd have to bring over. So you'd either have to bring over the current Amherst teachers, which would. Sound to me like you're gonna need those same twenty teachers. Because last I knew, teachers weren't growing on trees at this point. So good luck finding twenty teachers to take those twenty positions. You're gonna have to take twenty plus positions out of the current collective bargaining agreement, which I'm sure is going to be a fun, easy conversation. They'll gladly willingly do that. Um, you're also gonna have to look at incorporating, what is it, three hundred and fifty kids, give or take, between seventh and eighth grade. Into a building that has, uh, a gym, has a cafeteria. You're not fitting a thousand kids in that cafeteria. You're gonna have to change your schedule for that. Or you're gonna have to do the one thing that we haven't talked about is make a large addition to Sohegan to have all the extra common space for music. Art, science, gym, cafeteria, guidance. Am I missing any other common spaces? Learning commons. I mean, so we're just gonna, instead of doing a bigger elementary school, we're gonna do a bigger high school at Sohegan. So. I think i- it's which shell are we going to hide the pearl under when we, when we do this? And again, going back to, you may not want to incorporate kindergarten preschool here. Um, I, I almost guarantee you that Amherst is not going to want to move seventh and eighth grade over here, nor is the administration from the conversations we've had. And then again, as much as we may not want to admit that it's a thing, the AEA is going to have a say in this as well. And good luck getting twenty less positions in that collective bargaining agreement. For starters.
And just before we continue the conversation more. Where are the community members who are asking for this massive change in how we do business across two communities? Wh- where are they? Like, we've been talking about this for a year. I haven't heard from more than two or three people in a year about this. If this was something the community wanted and they were saying this is gonna solve our problem. Where are they?
So I'm gonna go back a couple of minutes here to specifically the pre-K program. So Tom, thank you very much for coming tonight. I appreciate it. I know, uh, you've got a lot better things to do on a rainy Monday night than. Sit here at a Sohegan School Board meeting. So thank you. Um, I, I do have to say, I do agree with John when it comes to the pre-K program. I don't see it as a sizable value to the students with inside our purview. Those are grades nine through twelve. I see that there are better opportunities to use that space, um, over this past weekend. And I promised him I would say it. Um, somebody from our automotive CT program approached me and, uh, said, why can't we bring that here? Instead of spending time in a van, going all the way down to Nashua, why could we not do something like that here? We've got the expertise. We have the physical space. Um, and there, there's no reason in the world why we couldn't do that. And I literally said, you're a hundred percent right. Um, when we bring stuff, uh, from the pre-K program over here to the high school, I have to look at it through the lens of a Mount Vernon taxpayer. The services that we currently provide to the students at this high school. And then, um, what other services can we provide to, to Mount Vernon families? And the statistic is this, and stop me real fast if I'm not allowed to say this. Um, but there's two kids from Auburn and that attend the pre-K program, of which zero is charged back to the town of Mount Vernon because there's a federal grant. And so we would then be talking about starting a brand new program in a town that's got extremely limited resources. We're trying to contemplate major building projects, um, whether it be our library, our town hall, we have to buy a fire truck. And conservation lands that we're trying to, uh, uh, to take care of. In addition to having one of the highest property tax rates in the entire state. Where is the benefit to the Mount Vernon resident about starting fifteen percent costs for a pre-K program? That two students are using currently and they're a hundred percent paid for by the US government. So that lens is the lens that I'm looking at this particular idea or strategy. I love the idea of a CTE program for the pre-K program, just not with inside the building here. When we take a look at options for our high school students, I would love to know the statistic about the amount of students that have requested. Uh, a, um, early child development program over the course of the last five to ten years. Have we not been able to meet that obligation? If we're sending our automotive kids, which we have many, I guess, um, being sent to Nashua. Why is that opportunity not being afforded to them? And more importantly, if we do bring a pre-K program into this, this infrastructure. Not only are those kids or those faculty and staff members, you're talking about additional administrators, gonna have to teach the kids. We're gonna need those people now to teach our high school kids about the pre-K curriculum. How do you teach a child? How do you go ahead and offer this? And that's outside of the classroom structure of those kids. That we're actually covering between, I'm making these hours up, nine and eleven. Now between eleven and the two o'clock timeframe, they now need to push into a high school classroom, which require high school certification. Um, voca- uh, keep me honest, Steve, vocational certification, that go ahead and offer that type of curriculum. So we're not just talking about. The small costs of bringing a current program over here and just fixing a couple of bathrooms, creating a new door and building a playground. It's much bigger than that, much more costlier than that. And then as the lens of somebody who lives up on the hill. I don't see the value to, to, to the students here. I don't see the value to the community up there.
So I'll give you one, one statistic or two statistics that I know. I believe in Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, it's one student in the past four years has asked about doing a pre, a pre-K sort of development program. Um, and our CTE numbers have doubled or more. We're over twenty-five students in CTE this year, which goes to the point of. That'll be something else we can talk about.
If we do go in down that path to talk to Dan about having additional space inside that building. A CT program brings in revenue, right? We can apply for state grants that brings in revenue. We bring in now tuition students from other districts in the area. That brings in revenue. And so that could actually be very beneficial to the community and to the tax base and to the taxpayer.
Thank you. Do we know what our biggest CTE? Program is that we're, we're shipping kids out to? Lock that up. Um. You have something to say or?
Yeah, I got, if I, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that I'm. That part of the motivation of this is that, that I know that one of the reasons that people voted against. The building project last year was that they felt that, there was a good number who felt that there was enough room at the high school to accommodate this. And I want to make sure that we. Discuss it to a point where we can satisfy those people one way or the other and satisfy ourselves to that effect as well. Um, looking at the numbers and being really close, I, I was really careful in saying that some of the rooms that are available are not. Appropriate for every kind of classroom. Um, so we would put, be putting a big ask on our administration to, to kind of war game this. And say, okay, this room can go here, this room can go here. Oh, we got twenty-five students here and, you know, a four hundred square foot room here. That's not gonna work. So honestly, at the capacities of, of the buildings, I don't think we could do everything in one building. There would have to be a shovel in the ground to make this work, or we would have to have portables, which. Kind of makes more sense here than at the elementary school, because they just, they would be used intermittently by students. It wouldn't be. An all day thing, you know, in elementary schools, that's their classroom for the day and that's where they stay except for specials. Here, that they would be used as they're needed. Um, we built the annex in two thousand three for ten point two million dollars. Worst case CPI analysis on that puts it around twenty-one, twenty-two million. And we would take three hundred and sixty kids out of the, the middle school. And. You know, that would alleviate a lot of problems with. A small amount of money, but whether it's, it's something that we have the space for, desire for. We would still have to decide what to do with Clark and Wilkins. We would still have to decide to do, what to do with the roof at AMS. What, you know, there's still a lot of maintenance issues here at the high school that would not be addressed as part of any of this. So there's a lot of money that. There's a lot of moving parts and that's what I want everybody to understand that this is not as simple as just opening the doors and saying, come on in. We've got room for a seventh, eighth grade. We. It's, it's a big ask. It's a lot of, lot of lifting. It's a lot of, you know, a lot of work, a lot of war planning. And we may go through all this and decide, you know, we're not any better off than we are. And we would be if we had built that, that school at Wilkins. So are we willing to go through all that and end up, possibly end up at the same place we, we are now? Or what's, what's our question? What's our ask? I like the idea of bringing CTE over, taking the Makerspace. Equipment and adding to it, CNC machines, the, the three D printers, the, the laser cutters. All the saws and all that stuff. And, you know, maybe lathes and stuff like that we can bring in for, for auto shop or whatever we, we can fit in here. I like that idea and I think that's, that's the second best alternative. And if it, if the CTE program and that has room for the preschool, why not? Um, I don't think it's, it's that expensive. And I think if it's part of a comprehensive. Plan to address a lot of, as many issues as we can with the space that we have. Um, I think that, that would be a great idea.
Can I ask a question about the room space that I'm, I'm back to? Alright, so can we pull, can we pull back up the slide that says, how many rooms are there? Total number of classrooms, including all educational spaces, seventy-six, and then the adjustments, and then we end up with fifty-six? And then my second question, Steve, I think is for you. One of the things you shared with us is a slide that says. Current classroom utilization at AMS, seventh grade and eighth grade. And I'm a little confused because it says one seventh grade, four core classrooms, plus a shared gym, fax, technology. IND, world language, art course and band. And then it's the seventh grade again?
Yeah, so they also.
There's two sections of seventh grade.
So there's, uh, so there's four sections. So there's, um.
Group, section one is in one, in four, then in four, and then. Two, other, two seventh grade teens and two eighth grade girls. So there's eight classrooms plus gym, fax, technology, ID, world language, art course and band, which they share. Okay. Eight, so it's eighteen, sixteen.
Plus a portion of a whole bunch.
Right.
Especially plus program, plus a common, you know, the, the gym.
So that is without doing any of the academic supports, anything, that's twenty-four classrooms, which is the basic, really basic. Um. And, and I was assuming. And then there is the gym. Okay, so Dan, if we go to this, this, yep, the one you're at right now. This is, I guess, my disconnect because here we say we've got seventy-six classrooms. And then. And then we deduct all these other things and we end up with fifty-six. And then you give us a chart. Like five, the room utilization, all buildings, which is like five, I think, five forward. That says seventy. Yeah.
Keep going?
Yep.
It includes a lot of the spaces that I put back. This one?
Uh, no, one more. That one. So that's based on seventy classrooms. So if you go i- in order to get that twenty-five free, right? So in theory. Twenty-five free gives us enough for the absolute core courses of. Um, seventh and eighth grade. Um, actually, it's just seventh grade. It's just seventh grade. It's not eighth grade. Those numbers have to double once we add eighth grade in, right? So it gives us, it's not the annex, it's, it's all buildings. I mean, we're talking, we're, we'd need a minimum of fifty rooms. Well, you have fifth and eighth, seventh and eighth grade. And this is seven. No, no, it's cause, no, so there's, there's eight rooms for seventh grade core. And eight rooms for eighth grade core. So that's sixteen rooms. Okay, and then. Gym, fax, technology, ID, world language. I mean, it's not just one world language. So we're talking about like twenty-four, twenty-four-ish classrooms. It's gonna be more than that, but you max out the annex is what you're trying to get to. It's not even just the annex. I mean, it's the entire building. And this is on the assumption of twenty-two kids per class, but when we look at it, it's not twenty-two kids per class. We've got classes that have sixteen, we've got classes that are fifteen. And in order to do these numbers that we're seeing in room utilization, all buildings. So if you can go back to the other slide, Steve.
Seventeen one?
Yeah, we have to get rid of all the special education space. No, not the special ed, sorry. That would, that would be minus six. We have to get rid of the entire learning commons. We'd have to get rid of.
Have to use the conference room.
We'd have to use the conference rooms, no more school store. The cafeteria, library, mini gym, gym, technically all gets added. I don't know where they become classrooms, but they become classrooms. The weight room has to become a class. We get rid of the weight room. We have to get rid of tech, tech support. I mean, how does that work? We don't have seventy spaces. I get that if we take the whole space and we assumed we had no walls, we took the square footage, applied the square footage. To what the state says is accurate, that that comes up with these numbers. But we have to make a decision. If we're gonna move ahead with, with like trying to convince everyone to move seventh and eighth grade over, we need to make a decision that we're. Keeping fourteen of these. Of these classes that are cut here and.
Or keeping.
I am, I am not okay with that. Um, I am not okay with getting rid of basically all the extra space. I'm just not. I, I would be fine with getting rid of some of the spaces. I think there are things we could do to make things more, but I mean, you're talking about removing. All these spaces. So we're no longer gonna have any learning commons. We're no longer gonna have any school store. We're no longer, which again is not a great learning space anyways. You know, I don't even get how cafeteria, auditorium, library, gym, mini gym, I get. But, I mean, those are included in the seventy. If, you know, I, cause I'm assuming seventy special ed is, we have to take out, which is what leaves the seventy. So in order to hit seventy, in order to hit the numbers that we're seeing in that other spreadsheet, which looks great. Alright, we gotta get rid of a gym. We're a hundred percent. We gotta get rid of a library. I mean, I mean, that doesn't make.
But we'd have to sign, assign classes.
Yeah. But wrong, but we. So that. Give me to go into the library. I mean, what, I can't go to the library and take out a book if I'm on study hall? Because now, I mean, I mean, that to me, that doesn't make sense to me. And I really appreciate you pulling it together because I think it's helpful to look at that and know, and I get you, I don't have. Absolutely. But I think the hard thing is when you use the number seventy below and you say that's twenty-five extra spaces. That is, somebody's gonna take that and really, really misuse that because there's only twenty-five extra spaces. If we get rid of the gym. I mean.
That's why I said a lot of this involves like subjective decision-making. And we're gonna argue back and forth about what is and what isn't, what shouldn't be on the list, what should be on the list. And that's, that's completely fair. It's not, I, one of the things I want to highlight is this is not an easy exercise to go through and. This is, we're asking, if we say to the administration, hey, tell us if, if you can do this, you know, let's, I think it would require a consultant. I think we've done the back of the napkin here. We would have to have somebody come in who can say. These, you know, this is how I would configure these, these rooms in the school. If you want to do this without putting a shovel in the ground, but. You know, I think in the end they're gonna say, you, you need, at least need portables.
And we do. Hold on, hold on one second. Oh, 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 hold on, Mr. O'Keefe.
So just, if I make a suggestion, can we go back to the pre? I'm sure Mr. Goff here doesn't want to spend.
Yeah, I'm, I.
And I know this is the one issue that's important to them. So how do you want to handle that? And then there's a whole different conversation about seventh and eighth grade.
I know, and.
Like to jump in on, but I, I think getting him.
That's, that, that's the end of the discussion. I mean, if, if Amherst and Mount Vernon don't wanna.
If Amherst is not interested.
Yeah, I have to be honest with you. The town of Vernon is not on the record at all about which direction they want to go in. What we are on the record for is saying, we want to look at all of our ideas. We are going to be paying somebody to do that for us. They're gonna go ahead and do all their work this year. They're gonna come back to our community with a report to say, this is what we think is viable. I've heard so many ideas over the last three months about what we can do at the village school. Like, all that stuff is gonna be digested, captured. Betted through the community and then boom, out of that, then I'd be prepared to engage in a more deeper conversation about seventh and eighth grade. I already have my personal feelings, which I'm gonna keep to myself. I think actually everybody probably already knows, because I've shared them in the past. It's not an easy lift, but. As a representative of my community, I am not willing to go any further than saying, we're looking at it. We're gonna go ahead and study it. We're gonna come up with the best decision that we feel is appropriate for us about our seventh, eighth grade students. So. The pre-K program though, I think that's something that we could solve tonight to see if that's something that we want to continue to pursue with these guys because. They literally have to go back to their community and their community has to say, we need a new elementary school. And hopefully they get it this year because it's, it's rightfully deserved. Sorry, Tom.
Can I address your concern about the, the finances for Mount Vernon? And I don't, I don't know that I'm right about this.
Okay.
But, so someone correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if it wasn't a matter of bringing. Mount Vernon into the cooperative for the purpose of pre-K. So, so we're not worrying now about. Just them paying rent. It's just rent to Amherst to accommodate the pre-K space. Then. Mount Vernon saves, and I don't, you know, I'm just throwing out numbers. Obviously, it's a different number. But it's a thousand dollars a month in rent. And obviously, it's significantly, significantly bigger number than that, but it's a thousand dollars a month. Mount Vernon is saving its share of that. Right? Because as part of the cooperative, you're getting your proportional benefit.
We're getting our hundred and fifty dollars off.
Right. You're getting your hundred and fifty dollars off. And I would imagine, I mean, are you paying anything to Amherst for those two kids that are in the program right now?
So I don't know if we're allowed to go deeper than that.
Because if you're not.
The community is not.
Right. So if it's all getting granted, I would imagine it would be the exact same thing. Cause.
However.
Like, how does it increase?
However.
Vernon's cost, I guess, is what I'm kind of.
So, two different things.
And maybe I'm being dense on.
The tuition slash rent, all that stuff, that's a completely different sort of example than what we've been presented about absorbing it into the co-op. The co-op is where the expenses actually lie. Really, from my perspective, not a good deal for Mont Vernon. When we talk about the rent or the tuition piece, I have to say, this is going to be a permanent solution. Knowing this community, I've lived around here almost my entire life. This is the way it is. Those portables at that elementary school are twenty-plus years old, right? So when I went to middle school in Milford, those portables were out there for fifty years, who knows? But a very long time, I went to school in them and then they eventually built onto the middle school. That stuff lasts forever and people keep it in their mind, like, why change it? It's already working. My concern is, is opening that door to the tuition piece. And now we don't have the space to do an automotive program, to do a healthcare program, to do, actually, I think, you know, a, a special ed program that's a little bit more dynamic than we're doing now to save some out of district tuition. We can easily hire some ABAs to come in and do some stuff inside the annex on the first floor. That's a whole different sort of pie in the sky idea. But from a tuition slash rent standpoint, um, I think it just really limits our options. With the space that we have for the people that we're supposed to be focusing on, and that's the people inside this building from our two communities.
And that's been my concern all along as we've been having the conversation is that we're one district that's charged with serving a certain population of nine to twelve Amherst and Mont Vernon students. And when we talk about bringing in students basically from another district into the building, it would be difficult then if we get more students into the high school, say, or we, we, we all have recognized over the course of these conversations that the way we deliver education has changed in twenty or thirty years from what we used to do of students and desks, although I'm not sure we ever did that here. Um, you know, but in rows, two things that are dynamic and there's movement and there are, from what I've heard, sometimes students who are using classrooms that might be empty on paper to do an ELO opportunity or have some other things going on that way not be represented on the, on the spatialization surveys that we've looked at. So I'm concerned the same way in opening up the space that is dedicated to the nine to twelve Amherst and Mont Vernon students to students who are not part of this district. But that might just be me. And Steve.
If I just may follow up on one point, Tom, was there ever like a path that maybe Steve can answer this where there was an investigation in terms of renting commercial space, like on one-on-one A or something along those lines for a pre-K program?
No, this is the first idea we had of it. Came out of our facilities retreat back in July, a conversation. I don't remember how it even started. Steve might've brought it up, but we had started to discuss it at that point. Keeping kids in the district, but we had not gone beyond that to look for commercial space or anything. This is the first iteration of the topic that we had come up with.
Cause my assumption is, is that, and again, I'm not an Amherst resident, but as an Amherst resident, I don't know if I'd wanna be paying rent, right, for a program that we could actually house in the Clark School, right? If we go ahead and do a bond issue, we own the building, boom, we're able to put an expansion on it, have a space that's appropriate for the program versus now paying rent to something that's temporary, temporary, and maybe not serving the needs for, for the long term. So just another sort of layer of, of costs that as a resident of Amherst, I would wanna question and, and get some answers to.
Can, can I ask another question? And I don't know, Mike, if you know. So we know that there's square footage requirements for kindergarten. Are there square footage requirements for preschool in the rooms in the annex? Do they meet enough, a minimum requirement?
I'm not aware. Um, many schools, um, you know, are converting to, you know, like, we had a old building with our preschool before we brought it into the schools. I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
And one of the pieces that Amherst had, you know, I was during last year, um, lots of, right, had lots of facility, lots of building, PTAs and, and lots of, and lots of emails. Frankly, there was this vision that there was all this extra space over here. Use it. And seven and eight wasn't it for a lot of reasons. I spoke very early about um, how seven, eight helps some, but not all. And I don't believe that if the seven, eight, I've said this comes here, I don't think it increases the educational program for nine through twelve. I just, I just, you know, I've been in the seven through twelve in a different dynamic. So it was, you know, Amherst, we had lots of these, wow, there's so much space over here. And we're trying to be honest, we spent time, a whole retreat discussing, how can we make, uh, you know, reduce the size of the project? To lower the number because, you know, we started with fifty-three, went to forty-seven, I think. No, we start with eighty-something, sorry, went, went to fifty-three. And if there's all this space available, let's at least talk to Sohegan to see if they're interested. At least there's, there could be, and I agree with everything everybody said, there could be some benefit to some kids who don't have to travel, who are interested in early, we don't know the numbers. And there are other CTE opportunities that will probably have more, but there's a whole process for that too. So this was about the, you know, economizing or using efficiency in space. Or at least asking the Sohegan Board, Amherst Board, asking, are you interested in having this discussion? But no is okay. There's a lot of priorities in for nine through twelve. It is okay.
Dana, we never followed up on you. Do you know what the most popular CTE is?
So, uh, most of our kids are going to National Health and Science, but there's not a clear, there's not like.
Which program?
One program, culinary, health sciences, H VAC.
H VAC is the other one that someone mentioned.
But there's not like. Oh, everyone.
Right. Okay.
I think one of the reasons we did this was that, at the meeting we had with the Amherst School District School Board, and they, they said, you better, you know, if you have space, let us know what you have so we can plan around that. I think what we looked at tonight is, yeah, we have space, but it's not that simple. And, you know, what are we willing to do with the answer of that? It's not that simple. You know, do we, are they, is Amherst School Board gonna talk to us? Do we, do we offer to, to look at it more deeply or do we just say, this is, this is really, really complicated and, you know, obviously we don't have the adequate space to do this right, right now. Um, do we wait till next spring and see, you know, what's?
No.
I don't think we can kick it down the road for them. I think they need to know. But they need to know now.
What's our answer? We have to say it's not that simple.
Can I?
Yeah.
Something. I, 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 I think you kinda just answered it. I think you're in a position to answer. We're not in a position to assume pre-K at, at Sohegan High School at this time. And that gives Amherst the information they need to go pursue what they need to pursue. I think, uh, not addressing it, uh, would be a disservice to the Amherst School Board because they have some things that are contingent on this decision at this moment in time. Um, that's, that's where I'm at, knowing, you know, the conversations that Tom and the Amherst School Board and, and the Amherst Building and Grounds Committees are having at this moment in time.
All right. So, um, but maybe, cause I know, you know, where are we at this feeling or do we take like a little straw poll about? We could probably vote, moving on, where, where we are with the. Other financial part before we move on too quickly. Well, yeah, move on, not too quickly because it certainly hasn't been correct, but. I mean, I think one of the things that, you know, if I'm sitting over there in Tom's seat, I'm thinking, well, hell yeah, I'd love to have a bond that lets me fix Clark Wilkins up so that we can add space and make it good for kindergarten and preschool. And yeah, that would be ideal, but the problem is those aren't passing. You know, those aren't, that's not happening. So, so it's, it, you know, just like, again, if I'm Tom, when we say it'll only be twenty million dollars or so to build on here, I'm sure that was like, good God. You know, we really need that money. Like, we can't be spending, we cannot say, oh, and we need twenty million dollars here at the school. We just can't do that. It's just not gonna be an option. And we gotta remember that even if we opened up space, and I know this is all part of the bigger discussion as far as the seven, eighth, even if we open up space for them, it's seven, the seventh and eighth came over, there still has to be a lot of work done at AMS. So, I mean, we are the school that is structurally right now and maintenance-wise right now in the best position. And that doesn't mean that there's not things that have to get done and there's not stuff we need to take and stay on top of, and there's not stuff that's coming. But we are part of a bigger community and we've got to recognize that some of this, you know, it, it has, some of this has to be flowing down to the other district. And I understand that my job is to represent this school, but this school is part of a community of learners coming all the way up from pre-K. And maybe the answer isn't, we bring pre-K over here. I'm not saying that, but we've gotta think of this in terms of the bigger picture and we've gotta think of this in terms of, you know, what are their needs? I mean, it would be tragic if we put in, I mean, if, 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 if monies were diverted here that prevented a really crucial situation that's happening down there. And it's, it's gotta all fit together at the end of the day and, and what, and I think we have an obligation to work collaboratively and see what, if there's something we can do. And if the answer is no, it's not gonna work, we don't want it, we can't do it here, you know, that's fine. I, I'll vote my vote of opposition, but we, I don't think we should be just saying, oh, well, they'll be fine. They can do this or whatever, because we, we do need to recognize that there's a limited pool of money coming.
There's going to be a lot of money spent on buildings in this district in every capacity in the next ten to fifteen years. No matter how you cut, slice it and dice it and cut it and spend it and, and allocate it, money is going to be spent in one way or the other, or there's going to be the need for money, I should say. In theory, it could be voted down every time. And then the consequences are of that, whatever they may be, but whether it's this building, if it's AMS, if it's Clark Wilkins, if it's a combination where everybody gets ten percent of what they want, there are needs in every single building in this district. So it's just a matter of allocating that. So if, if the preschool thing is, is off the table, that's fine. We, we can all go our separate ways and we can work on a preschool solution or another idea to try to create some space. You guys can still work on your idea. Um, the ideas that you have for your building needs, maybe it's better to keep them all siloed. Uh, cause again, as I mentioned earlier, seven, eighth grade, there's no desire to move them here. We don't see that desire in the community. There's no desire for preschool, totally fine. It was an idea. We floated it out there just to see what was gonna happen and we go on and do the next thing, just like election day thing gets, get voted down. Come up with a new idea, come up with four new plans i- in, in a month and a half. So, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, we don't need to overthink it. Um, I think we can, you guys can vote on it, give us our directive and then we'll go on. But I think at some point, you know, the realization is there's gonna be a lot of money spent on these buildings in the coming years.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So were you raising your hand? No? Okay. Dan, you wanna make a motion?
Make it positive. Um, I'm gonna move that we accept the uh, preschool program from the Amherst School District and find a way to, um, accommodate them within our facility. At a time to be negotiated by the administration.
So it's accepting the, the program? Okay. Okay. I will start with that. There's a second. Um, any other discussion?
I have just one point.
Please.
Because I intend to vote in the negative for this because, um, I don't think that we've properly floated it to the point where I'm comfortable saying, yes, let's do it. It was a cool conversation about CTE, but it's a, I think it would end up costing our district a lot of money. So for that reason, I'm gonna say no, but I do think it's a cool idea.
So, uh, and, and I appreciate the, the, it being in the affirmative. If we vote it down in the affirmative, then we're just gonna need another one in the negative. Because we're gonna give them their official directive, so.
I think we can infer what, what the intent is.
Okay.
Out of, out of a negative, positive, we're, we're capable of that, I think.
And the motion specifically, even though I seconded it, is, is to move ahead basically with at least exploring. And yes, we wanna see if we can do that. Not, not a definitive, it's gonna happen. All right. You wanna call a vote? Yes. All right. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Two in favor, those opposed? And five opposed. And so, so that was voted down. One thing I.
Have a good night.
Right. Thanks, Tom, for.
Thanks for coming.
For hanging out and answering questions. Okay. Let's go discussion of seventh and eighth grade. Um, I do wanna continue that discussion. There's, I just wanna add a couple of things of my thoughts that I haven't really stated. You know, looking at the numbers that, of what's available, if you took all the students and moved them into the main building and explored a lot of different rooms, you would be at basically a hundred percent capacity. Your building would be full. And then you're gonna move seventh and eighth grade into annex and that building is going to be really crazy full. And at some point that breaks. We, we're shifting the, the issues that are happening at AMS and at Wilkins, where they're at full capacity. We're shifting something to here, which means then we're building something here. And, you know, different numbers have been tossed around at different times. It would be like a twenty million dollar addition-ish, maybe, you know, with the big-ish. As Mr. Chamberlain always says, give me the ish. Because we don't know that amount, but if you're asking, Wilkins, we know has some sort of building project going on. We don't know whether that new number is going to be, but if it's forty million, thirty million, I'm throwing a number out there. AMS, we know that just the repairs on their building, they said is thirty million dollars. And then you're gonna add another twenty million. I mean, the, the, the community has already said, we're not taking, we're not adding those to our, our community. So why would we add in another addition rather than support improvements to be made at the middle school? Um, you know, a- and, and them to work and then support whatever building project that Amherst School District chooses to do. You know, we as a high schooler is here for ninth through twelfth grade, yes, we could expand seventh to seventh and eighth. If we did everything in our school really, really well, our test schools, test scores were phenomenal, our students were achieving absolutely fantastic things, which we know is not exactly correct today, but we are working on those instruction practice, student engagement, those things that we're really working on. But if we did all that stuff and we had outstanding outcomes, then we could say, hey, what else can we take on? What are the projects? Where do our energies go? Right now, our energies are on our ninth through twelfth graders. You start adding something, now administration is, is now expanding more, trying to figure out, how do we get this done? Other thing, other, the current projects to improve in our own classrooms might get pushed aside a bit. I don't wanna go there. I really don't want that. I would rather support the SAU and support administration to improve their practice, which is what's something Mr. Chamberlain's been charged to do with the secondary education process, which we've already worked on in the high school. And now he's working with the middle school on those things. I support that before I support taking the energies that are going on in this building now and distracting the improvement work going here. And we're at, at capacity. I don't wanna fill this building with capacity. It just doesn't make sense. I would rather charge the administration to come up with fraud programs and things that, that work for our current students, nine through twelve. That's where I start. So, I'm getting off my soapbox. But where are others going? What, where does this conversation go for seventh and eighth grade?
I have one quick thing. Sorry, I don't wanna monopolize, but couple concerns, um, I don't think that it's a good solution for us to do anything that requires, um, new building to house a different body before we deal with a couple of things that we need to take care of here, which is our watertight issues. So like our leaking skylights, we still need to take care of. You know, that doesn't seem like a big issue in light of a twenty million dollar ask, but also, um, we have some work, since I met Stephanie, the very first thing I heard from her is that our science labs need some work. And if you'll pay attention to some of the documentation that you have in front of you, um, that's an issue that we need to make sure that is addressed. Um, our science labs, we, we failed to get a, a, a five hundred thousand dollar contribution to cover a portion of the science labs. So I, I fear that adding a different building project or shifting our focus away from what we need to deliver our education here would push that science lab project off further and further. And I think.
Plus the addition included science labs.
But, but, but those addition, that, those science labs then would be middle school science lab? Or you wanna add more science labs? I mean, I'm just drawing you back to, we couldn't get five hundred thousand dollars to start putting aside for science labs. So.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, I know, I know we're part of one community that has some space and, and school needs. But this board should first be concerned with the delivery of education to nine to twelve. And if we haven't been able to keep our own house in order, inviting other people over right now might not be the best use of resources. And I am, I'm not a person who loves to spend money, actually. Like, I'm pretty conservative when it comes to things. I see us potentially, we're talking about building. We're talking about building an addition here or putting a metal building outside, which. I don't know why we would do that. Um, and it doesn't solve one problem anywhere else. So it might solve space problems, but it doesn't solve any of the. Facts that our buildings are aging and they need to be addressed. So the roof at the AMS is still going to need to continue to be addressed. The Clark or the Wilkins School is still going to ha- need something done over there because of aging systems. Um, so I guess maybe they'll get numbers on renovations versus. Rebuild, but we're still talking about money in those spaces. So I'm not sure I could ever support anything like a twenty million dollar addition here. For a population we don't currently serve that isn't interested in coming here.
If. The the. And a twenty million dollar addition. Configured any way we wanted it to be. Would bring three hundred and sixty students out of AMS. The the elementary school. Classes are about hundred and thirty to hundred and fifty, depending on the bubble here and there. So. You could bring. Second, you could bring third and fourth into AMS after we leave, you know, really. Create up that space. And still have several classrooms. Left over, which would make. A much, much smaller project at the Wilkins. School probably allowing you to close Clark. As well, so. It might. Save a lot of money in the long run, especially when we do have a lot of. Maintenance projects, you know, it might still cost us fifty million dollars. Short term, but it would probably alleviate some of those maintenance projects as well.
Well, it won't fix the watertight issues.
Unless unless part of the bond included. You know, an extra. One point five million to.
In the meantime, we're not dealing with with our science labs here and I just. It seems like we're just swapping problems. So it it sounds like the town's not ultimately.
Couldn't be included.
Do, well, the first question I have is, does does the community have the capacity to take on an additional bond to build? Yeah. I.
Question is unknown.
Right. But they've, it's been voted down.
There's been a lot of people on various. I mean, I don't know what their politics are, but um. Who have said. Um, why aren't you maintaining your buildings? We want you to maintain your buildings, so. Thirty million dollar bond for a roof replacement may have a much more chance of success than a fifty four million dollar bond for a new school. For a person like that. So I don't know that that's been tested because that question hasn't been asked. I think it's. So, and. You know, seventh and eighth grade to presume in the first instance that it requires a twenty million dollar project is not something that we've discussed. The question is, in my mind, is what would it take? A current, I think Dana's no doubt correct, current programming, the way we're currently operating, it would be a tough. A tough. Pull. What? It it what it does is it forces us to examine the question of. What is the value of the courses and the programs that we are offering? Do they meet the core standards that the the expectations we have for rigor and academic prowess and painting the portrait of a graduate? Are they superfluous? I'm not saying I have the answers to those questions, but that would be the examination the administration would have to go through to. Answer the question of, okay. If we were to do this. In order to make it. Work in the current structure without putting any money into a construction project. Here's the costs. You'd have to get rid of these X number of courses, and if you were to do that. The ones that maybe are on the periphery would maybe be these or be in these groups. We don't really know. Okay, but we either support it or don't support it, but that's that's fact. Now we know, like, okay. Gee, if we want to keep some of that, then we can ask ourselves, what's the plan B? Is somebody said portables, that's not twenty million dollars. Is there a Conex box that can be put out there? Is there something that can bridge the gap to buy us all in the community time to evaluate? Where the expansions need to be. Limited scopes for particular purposes that have articulable solutions to um, to identified problems, whether that's a little expansion here, a little expansion at the Wilkins School, fixing up the AMS. Or anything else like that. System wide. So in my view, getting the answer to the question. What would it take to actually bring seventh and eighth grade over here? What would that actually look like? It allows us to bring to our community to say, well, we looked at this hardcore and we there's, if the answer is there's no space, then. That is. That helps Amherst School District sell their bond. If there's a perception that there's space out here and we have a legitimate study that says, hmm, it we we could, in order to do it, it would cost us twenty million dollars, if that's the answer. Um, then, then, then we have credibility. Then, then the next best solution or other solutions have um, strength and credibility as well. I I think if we dismiss this idea. Based on our perceptions and fears without actually a- answering the questions of how to over, what are the challenges and how are we going to overcome the challenges, then I think we're doing our community a disservice.
So one question I want to ask you, so you are choosing to prioritize moving seventh and eighth grade into the annex over. Providing a full curriculum here in the high school. You would rather cut classes here in the high school to make it happen. Because that's what you're suggesting.
I would like to see what it would take to do that and and if there is, if it's too painful to to. Trim what we're doing right now, and it does require some kind of an expansion here, then I'd like to know what that looks like.
So Amherst School District said they're not interested. They weren't even discussing it. So what are we going to do, force it down their throats? That's what I don't understand where we're going with this discussion. That's what bothers me. I don't know.
It seems confusing to the community because they're hearing some very small voice saying, there's space here, there's space here, but when we have the conversation. There's not really space for the seventh and eighth grade to we to open the doors tomorrow and just walk them all over here. So it's a couple hundred yards. The teachers, the students, they could all walk over here and install themselves in that building tomorrow if they're, if we could really do this. Whatever we do is going to require some expenditure of funds. And Tom sat there tonight and he said, our teachers don't want this, the AEA doesn't want this, the community's not asking for it. We're not really looking for that solution. And so now we're going to give this person who we've just hired, who's doing a phenomenal job. Instead of. Educating our kids for the next three or four months, could you please figure out how we could educate our kids differently and do all this work? But we may not need it. We just want her to spend a lot of time doing that and figuring out what we could cut or what we could do differently, not from the perspective of, I see this would be better for. High school students, but from. We could do this differently and somehow deliver education. I mean, we've already charged them in our vision meeting. With working on our language arts, with working on our math, you know, we had a bunch of things we want them to do. And and I'm frustrated, to be honest. Because I feel like we keep having the same conversation and it's keeping us from having the conversation we need to have, which is what exactly do our students need? And and are we doing it the best way we can? And to push them into a conversation of. Uh, of that with a goal of finding out if we can have seventh or eighth grade here or not. It just feels so backwards to me, like, why would we not figure out? If what we're doing is what our kids need to leave this place and go function in the world and have their first choice of whatever it is they want to do and be prepared to do that. Versus. Bring in another group of people before we figure out what our own house needs. And again, I say that as a person who is very fiscally conservative, I just also from a teaching background have huge red flags about the way that we're doing this.
Mr. Okay.
So I have to say that was so eloquently stated. Thank you, because that's exactly the way I'm feeling. And the only thing I'm going to add to that is the town of Malvern is not ready to have this conversation. Let us do our homework before we can then come to the table, fully informed, figuring out what the best path for the community up there is. That's all.
Yeah, because along those lines, I mean, who leaves them? Oh, it would be tragic if we decided we were going to do this and then, I mean, we don't have Amherst wanting to do it, but. And then, uh, Mont Vernon decided they were going to be pulling their seventh and eighth graders and having their own. Seventh and eighth grade over a Mont Vernon. I mean, then that's like. That completely changes everything, but. I'm just going to come back to what I said before. I don't, one, I don't think the community has the stomach, the ability, the checkbook, the desire. To do a building project here at South Eagan. I just, I don't see that happening. In any way, shape or form. Um, I don't mean like, are we going to fix like a room or something, but I mean an actual, we're going to bring in and pay for buildings or do site work or put a shovel in the ground and build something. I don't see that. Um. And getting back to Dan's slides. I really wish you hadn't put seventy classrooms there then, because if we look at the actual fifty six. That's, it it leaves. This is what's free each period, eleven, fifteen, fourteen, seventeen, fifteen, nineteen, sixteen and sixteen. And that is way, way less than is needed to bring over a seventh and eighth grade. And that doesn't even include, like, I mean, our gym is in use. Had this, um, one, two, three, four, five. All but two periods. So are are we going to have the middle schoolers not do gym? Or are we going to also have to find a gym space over there? Um, are we going to bring the seventh and eighth grade and have them eat in the cafeteria with? The middle of the high schoolers? Because if we're not, then that's another space and we just, we don't have the space. Um, if there truly was the space, if we could just move everyone over here and there was room to put a little cafeteria in there and a little gym in there and or work it so the gym was both covered. And, you know. I'd say, look, fine, let's pay the whatever it's going to be. It's going to be like a quarter million dollars just to get a study on this. I mean, it's not something Dana can do. You know, Dana can't just be like, oh, let me do an engineering design on this. I mean, this is a big, big project. And we're talking about spending a lot of money to look at doing something. That. The school district currently has those in the community that would be sending the children, doesn't want done. And I, again, I am not okay giving up all the things that would be necessary. And now we're talking about even more than the things that are necessary from from Dan's slide. You know, that gets us from the seventy six to fifty six. You know, because maybe we could agree on some of those, but we'd have to give up all of those plus more. In order to just fit the existing sixth, seventh and eighth grade, never mind what's going to happen when those numbers go up by, I don't know, like twenty a class or whatever. But you know, those those slight increases that are that are likely coming down the road. So I can't support it. Mr. View.
I. I find myself falling on both sides of this issue, depending on the moment. You know, I had hoped originally that I would just. Get this master schedule and I would clearly find all the classroom space we needed and say, you know, here we go, open the doors, let seventh and eighth grade come in. But that wasn't the case. I mean, I can show that we have spaces, but they're not necessarily appropriate for what we need. Um, when, like Dana said, we're not going to stick. The kids in the engineering room because it's got a. You know, chain link fence across half the room and there's dangerous equipment inside, so there, it may say seventeen hundred square feet, but it's not seventeen hundred square feet and it's not appropriate for any class. That you want to put in there. Um, you know, I I say a twenty million dollar addition because it's easy to visualize. You know, we we know what we get with the annex for twenty million dollars, but. You know. The fact is that we would have to do something, you know, it would it would have to be a renovation to the main building. It would have to be. A bump out somewhere, there would have to be an auxiliary gym, there would have to be. Uh, maybe even a separate library. Things. You know, auxiliary spaces like that, that would have to be added on. So this is not, there there is no free option in this. There's no, there's no annex building that's just sitting there waiting. Um, what the costs are. Are, it's complicated. It's really, I'd say it a million times, it's really, really complicated. And Amherst has already moved forward with. You know. This building and I wish we could go back in time and go back to the day one of JFAK and make this a district wide. You know, examination of of our spaces. Is. Then I think we we're at a different place right now, but we're not and. Starting from scratch, from going back to day one and starting this whole process over again. I don't know if it's worth it to to us, the community, the amount of time that it would take to get to that that point. I don't know. I I. I think it's a great idea to have seventh and eighth grade in the cooperative, but. Right now with everything's going on, I think it is a. Hard sell to the community and a hard sell to this board.
I agree with that, being part of it. That it would, that it, that, you know, in theory, it would be a nice thing to do. So. Can do now. So, um. The question is, do we want to move forward at all with seventh and eighth grade? Do we want to make a vote to up or down on moving forward or not with this one? And then, um, there's one last piece I'd like to discuss after whatever comes out of this, but. Um, I. So I'm wondering where people.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That this board not pursue the idea of seventh and the eighth grade integration into this weekend cooperative until further notice.
There's a motion. Do I have a second? I will second that.
Also, they're noticed by.
By the board, till they decide to do so.
An after amendment until approached by. The other districts. Or. Sure, something like that.
So, all right.
A. Participating district in SE thirty nine.
All right, so we'll just, do you want to just amend your motion?
My motion that we will. Not pursue the integration of seventh and eighth grade students. Into the cooperative. Until approached by a member district of SE thirty nine.
Okay, do I have a second? Second by Sunny. Okay, discussion.
I'll have a discussion piece. I. I. Someone's going to have to lead. And. So Eagan isn't a good place to do that, has historically done that. And, um, you know, waiting for. Another district to say. That they do or don't want something from Sohegan. I don't know why we would handcuff ourselves like that. Um. I don't know there's anything preventing Sohegan from unilaterally asking a question of the members of of the voters of the cooperative as if. If. If they were, if they would um, be willing to support um. The cooperative authoring seventh and eighth grade services. I don't know that you need any. Agreement from any other district to do, to lead in that way. Now, whether it's a good idea or not. Um, be interesting to know whether the community was in support of that idea or not, however. Uh, so. I don't understand what. We're handcuffing ourselves, we're saying, okay, never again, we're going to have or have this discussion unless. Either Mont Vernon or Amherst comes back and knocks on our door and says. Wait, can you uh, have it opened up discussion again on on using the space at the high school? Is that, is that what the intent of the? Motion is, so we're. We don't talk about it anymore. Until somebody knocks on our door. I don't know why we would put ourselves in that position.
So. Uh, Sunny.
We are freeing ourselves. To move on. And improve. You know, what we're already trying to do. Um, sorry, I can't remember words. I I see it as we're freeing ourselves. And opening ourselves up to um, doing other things.
So what, one piece I just want to respond to that is I look, I look at this decision as a collaborative decision and not a unilateral decision. It's collaborative since, does, is Amherst interested? They've already said no. We've talked to administration, they're not on board. Tom said administration over at Amherst, at Amherst Middle School, not on board. That's not collaborative, just as far as unilaterally to say, let's do it. So that's why I. Like the idea of the motion because it would be more collaborative if someone approached and said, hey, let's work on this together. That's. My thoughts on that.
And if I may, in support of the motion, as I said many times tonight. That could easily happen next year after the study comes back to the community of Malvern and saying, hey, these are the costs and the community goes. Maybe we do pursue an integration into the cooperative. It's not shooting down the conversation, but we're going to allow the people of Malvern and to figure out what's best for them and then come to us and say, this is something that we would like to pursue.
Anybody else?
And I've been struggling with what we. Could accomplish in this meeting. What would be the, be our ask? What would be our final motions? Because without Mont Vernon and Amherst, both on board. Either one of them says, no, we're, we're done. That's, that's the end of the conversation as far as that goes. I mean, we can unilaterally say, hey, we want to do seventh and eighth grade, but if they don't send their students over. You know. And we've done it for nothing. I think this is important because I think it's informing the voters. Hopefully they'll. Some people will come back and review the meeting and see the slides and ask more questions if necessary. Um, this isn't, you know, it's not the easy que- easy answer that everybody, I think, you know. Not everybody, but a lot of people hoped it was. I hoped it was. And I hope that's clear to people and I I think this motion is the appropriate one, given those circumstances, so.
Anything else? I would say the same thing in support of the motion or very similarly, that again, we we cannot do it with the existing space. It would involve a significant. Building add-on additional project. And that is not something we as a board can just run off and do. We just can't. So unless. You know, at some point in the future, there's, there's um, that sort of. Desire or commitment to do a building project here. That would enable it to happen. Um, I think we need to move on and figure out the best way to use our space for our students. Okay, so I'm gonna. We're, we're going to work on education. Okay, um, all right, like I'm not, I want to call a vote. Um, so those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That's six and those opposed, that's one. Okay, so. That answers that question and we will look forward to supporting administration and. Working on instruction practice, integration. working on instruction, practice, integration with seventh and eighth grade in the high school, all those things that we've talked about. Um, one last thing I'd like to just bring up is I'd love to have a motion to charge our administration to look at our space that's available and come back with to us with ideas of how you suggest to, to either utilize it. And you know, at either adding curriculum, changing up curriculum, providing answers. Mr. Keith. There you go. We would have to, yeah.
Or revenue positive.
So where's revenue positive? Can we, as part of that, ask them to look at the Makerspace and spaces that, because I mean, we've already, because Makerspace would, Makerspace would open up space for the middle school, right? That would give them some space they could do something with. A one big room. Right. But, but something, it would give them a tiny bit of flexibility. It, it would probably get used more here, could get used more here, and we might be able to integrate it into physics, engineering. Right, several things or, yeah, um.
I'd love the idea of a practical engineering program where they can design things and build them. And also could be a CTE.
She's seconding the motion, by the way. Sorry, we didn't have a second yet. Yeah, sorry. Sorry. Do we need it reworded for you?
What's the motion?
Great job.
Today, congratulations. But that's very, very well done. And again, my Christie seconded. It might be interesting as part of that, Dana, to look at, I don't know if there is, again, on the CTE programs, I always wonder if there was just a class, not like my whole program, would there be greater demand, you know, like if, I don't know, we've got three kids that are going and taking automotive classes down or automotive CTE, but is that a full day thing for them or like a full half day or, but I mean, they've got the travel time down? And are there more? Would there be five times as many if they could do it just as a small part of the day and remove that hour of transportation back and forth? Right, like a half back, absolutely. Right. Thank you. Yep. Okay, so that's motion, second. Any other discussion?
Um, can it, just, what's different from that motion than something you would already normally do in your, as you're, in your role of examining how you're running a school? What, you know, how you should be doing it, how you should evolve over time and, and, and provide a high quality educational experience for all students? How does this, does this even change anything or is this kind of just cheerleading, do what you're already doing? Cause I hope it's more what you're already doing.
It is, you know, it was part of the outcome. So I see why people are kinda going in that direction because we wanted it to be an outcome and we wanted uh, people to know that it, you're exactly right. It's something that we've done, you know, at always as building administration, try to effectively utilize our resources to provide as many good, solid experiences for our students, you know, that we know they might want, right? And so this is really not a, 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 a real reach from what we typically do. And, and you can see with some of the work that we've done in the last few years with the evolution of the program of studies, the level of evolution of certain staffing, that we're constantly looking at how to better our organization. So students and families get the best experience here to be the, the version of themselves that they want. That is, that is something that will always happen whether we have a school board, you know, uh, uh, charge or not. Um, I think there is some room and, uh, and opportunities in front of us at, at Sohegan. Um, I think, uh, we will be very thoughtful and, and careful about how we do this, knowing that the circumstances and, and the eyes on, on this. Um, but it is something that we, we do on a regular basis and, uh, and so I think you're right. It's, it's not, it's, it's not, it's not new, but it is something that I know Dana feels strongly about. So.
So, uh, yes to everything that Mike said. I think, uh, so, some of it is definitely unique, like exploring the specifics of what a Makerspace, like that is a defined goal. I think, um, for me, what it does is I think reinforce the direction, um, that we're already going and sends a message to folks that, that, that the, that the board believes in, in the things that we are doing to be the right things to be doing in terms of examining how we're delivering, um, the education. Um, I just lost my train of thought. Um, I think it's also really opportune because, um, there's a lot of implications to some of the other ongoing work that we are presenting to the board, like with our graduation requirements work and building the master schedule and, you know, looking at all of those things. I think it really ties in very well. So I think it just kind of, I, I think it just kind of solidifies the direction in which we're moving. A much needed cheerleading, I think.
On a lighthearted note, I'm glad you said budget neutral outline, uh, out loud in front of the principal.
I didn't need you to say that.
I, I'm inclined to support the motion. Um, I would say this just as a thought about the Makerspace. It exists. It's not far away. I don't see that why there's any reason we can't have an agreement with our neighbor district about sending some high school kids over there who are interested in using that machinery and learning about that and, and incorporating that into a program of studies that is reasonably cost if we have staff to do that and, and we have resources because, because it, it exists. I don't know why, why we would need to lift it out of that space. The space problems are not there. They're, they're on the other side of town. So not serious space problems. Great. Great. And the, the point of me mentioning it was just, you know, to be creative with the thinking and, and you don't have to do it alone. If, please, I mean, send out the brainstorms. Maybe we need a committee. Do we need a committee to, to participate with the administration to hear the, the initial ideas to be part of the brainstorm, to be able to bring back on a regular basis with the findings and the, the thought processes and the, the ideas that are being floated around so we can be a part of that solution? Or, or are we just gonna kinda wait and hear about it?
Now, I, I think, uh, I think in combination with graduation requirement conversation, the visioning conversation, the data conversation that's happening, I think you're gonna see us weave in some of this stuff, October, November, December. So the board will absolutely be part of the journey as, as we discuss now four different, now I, I need everyone to be aware. We're asking a first year principal to take on four additional topics besides running a school.
That's a light load compared to what we put on you.
Yeah, I'm just telling you. I just, we gotta be very mindful on how we manage this, but I'm with you. You know what I mean? And so before, and I, and, and have heard me, before we start more committees internally or externally, I wanna think a little bit more on how to balance those asks, you know, but I'm with you, like working with the board, working with the community members to figure out the best direction. Um, but I just need to be really mindful of what we're asking our employees, you know, building admin and some teachers to join in on. And, and I wanna be mindful that it's Monday night and, and Dana Curran is here for about the fourteenth hour, fifteenth hour of her day. And, uh, I wanna keep that on the forefront if we can. Alright.
Can I just respond? Cause that was to me, just quickly. I appreciate your response and, and as long as it's a part of an ongoing conversation, there'll be an inherent ability to contribute along the way. So I just wanna be able to help. And I can only do that if I have the informations coming on a regular basis. So we're in, we, we don't need to, yeah, we can work on that thing.
And very quickly, my point was that this is sort of an open-ended charge. So as you have information or think of things more than like, we don't need a report next month.
I was kinda wondering.
One of the things that excited me about the seventh and eighth grade over was the opportunity for acceleration. I think we kind of like that idea that they'd be right here. Is there a chance to look into providing opportunities like that for the middle school and at the high school?
Yeah.
We actually are having some of those conversations as we speak.
Perfect. Alright, I wanna, can I, so Keith, yeah, I wanna get this. And on the Makerspace, I just wanna add real quick, I'm assuming, because there was some discussion when they came and talked to us about it being, so it could be moved, da, 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 that, I mean, obviously to the extent that's gonna happen, Amherst Middle School would have to be okay with it. Like everybody would have to see it as a positive thing. And my kind of impression is that it hasn't ended up being used as much within the school as they originally thought it might be. But if I'm wrong on that, obviously that's probably one of the very, very first questions. Cause if the answer is hello, we're not giving up the Makerspace, then that ends that discussion, right? So.
Ten grand in revenue, we like to use at Amherst Middle School this year.
Right. Alright, so I just wanna call the vote. Um, can we do that? So those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Alright, and any opposed? Opposed, passes. And it leaves, uh, public input. Does anybody here?
We need the microphone back.
Yeah. Public input, anybody in the room? Okay. Just don't forget to state your name and your town.
Alright, my name is Greg Fritz and I reside in Amherst. Alright, uh, thanks for the meeting. One, one thing I was hoping to hear about, um, that you talked about seven, eight that wasn't covered is there's only two options. Seven, eight can become part of your proper district and that's how we talked about. I don't understand why that wasn't discussed. If the annex could just become part of Amherst School District. And that solves a lot of the problems you were talking about, Stephanie, with the AA is still has those teachers. Um, your board is not worried about seven, eight, but it also seems to solve the space problem. So I don't, I don't know if it's an obvious answer to that, but, uh, that wasn't discussed and it wasn't part of your motion, but you're forbidden to talk about that again as well. So maybe in a future meeting, you can discuss the idea of maybe transferring annex to the Amherst School District. I was just listening to a lot of conversation and I think, you know, it's true, a lot of the Amherst School Board members don't support one thing or another, but maybe don't confuse that with the Amherst voters because of the undercount voter turnout issues and that, in that, um, scenario. Um, nothing's gonna be free as, as Tom mentioned. So we're not looking for a free solution. We're looking for the best value. So it is complicated, but we really need to do a cost analysis of each of these options before we just say that one's complicated, that one's complicated. They're all complicated. They're all gonna be costly. We wanna find which one's expensive, which one's cheap, which means, which means best bang for your buck. And that doesn't involve a lot of work, but I'm, I, I hope you guys will take on that for all the different options that are available. Um, I guess that's the main things that you didn't really talk about. So thanks for your meeting. And I think, uh, Dan, I really liked your second slide that had the, uh, the cube with the gas going around. There was a Ig Nobel Prize given out a couple of years ago. Ig Nobel Prizes are prizes that first awarded the science experiments that first make you think and then make you laugh. And there was an award given out a couple of years ago to someone who proves that a cat is a liquid. To put a cat in a fishbowl, takes the shape and fills the volume of the fishbowl. You put a cat on a ladder, takes the shape and fills the volume of the ladder. So that's, that's what a liquid, a fluid, a fluid is that. So I think you might be nominated for showing that children in high schools are Van de Waals gases, so.
I like that. Interesting. Alright.
Good evening. Blaine Purgis, Amherst, New Hampshire. This was a, a great meeting. It was, uh, necessary that, uh, you guys did, did the homework, did the research and you guys sat here and had the discussion. I don't necessarily believe the discussion is over and it is for, for now. And in, in a sense, you are backing now the Amherst School District to say, go ahead, we don't have the space. Uh, make another big ask. A couple of things. Dave, you pointed out that, um, you represent, your personal opinions shouldn't matter because you represent the people at Mount Vernon. You represent that ask this, the portion that comes here. You're representing the town. And, and all of you are representing the people of your towns. Not just the people who make use of the schools. Twenty-five percent of the households use the schools. Seventy-five percent don't. And over the last couple of years, and, you know, we've had a couple of surveys or called elections. And roughly a third of the voters decided to participate in that survey. And they expressed themselves. And after every election, people are reading the tea leaves of what it really meant. What it meant was, no. So if the Amherst School District comes back again with another ask that's over a hundred million dollars, that's tied up in the community for a number of years uh, for the benefit of twenty-five percent. And you're asking a hundred percent to take care of it. I'm, I'm suggesting, let's go beyond that. Now, you've been sensitive to say, whatever it is you do, revenue neutral. Or don't add any additional cost here. We're already high. And, and some would argue, oh, we're not really that high, but we are high. Okay? Uh, roughly twenty-five thousand per student, cost per pupil. And, uh, same thing for, uh, not the same thing, but the Amherst School District is approaching twenty-three thousand cost per pupil. Things change. When this building was open, there were roughly forty classrooms. Barring the other stuff, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, roughly forty classrooms. When the annex opened, there's twenty-five classrooms, that's sixty-five classrooms. And, and, and my little mind, I take the seven hundred, roughly seven hundred students that you have enrolled this year. And I perform simple division. Sixty-five, it's twenty-five and forty, forty is your denominator. And that gives you roughly ten point eight students per classroom per, per day. If you take seven hundred and divide that by forty, it's seventeen point five. So I get it. Things changed over time. The, they're looking at your watch. Give me a.
I'll give you a few minutes. Let's, I'll let you wrap up.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. The, things change, okay? And things are changing. The, uh, ten years ago, our performance, educational outcomes were some of the best in the state. They're not there. There's been a decline. No one wants to talk about that. It's a reality. People keep that in mind when they go to vote. Where I'm going is there's still space here. And as, as you pointed out, and, and there are a lot of things going on. There's, there's the whole thing with the master schedule. And I really appreciate that the effort was made to, to, um, uh, construct uh, the master schedule and, and make it available for board members to interpret and understand. That's, uh, that's a big thing, having been a former board member and asked for that kinda stuff and told you shouldn't have it. So that, that's, that's huge. I, I, I guess, I guess my concern is we have space here, so how do we fill it? How do we make it useful? How do we make it beneficial? At the same time, there's a greater need in the community for space, or at least in the educational community, ASD says, we need more space. And they're going to, I'm repeating myself, they're gonna come back again with another idea. And it's, it's probably gonna get the same response. So, will we back at this again next year? The fact that you don't hear from people in the community doesn't mean people aren't talking in the community. And when you look at it, how many of us are really saying anything? Only a handful, two or three of us in the community. It's a handful, maybe ten of us that, uh, are really saying anything. But because you don't hear from the rest of the community, because they're not packed in despite the rain, or, or it was a sunshiny day, doesn't mean people don't have opinions. They do. And we'll see about it at the next election. Good meeting, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I want to see, is there anyone online that wants, that is interested in speaking and they'll have them raise their hand?
No hands up.
No hands up, anyone?
No hands up.
No. One thing I do want to say, I don't know if anyone saw the newest, uh, US News and World Report, but we went from nineteenth ranked to tenth ranked. We have improved in our standing. You know, it's more than that and we, we appreciate all the work that's being done here to improve our instruction practice engagement. I don't have any updates at this time. Nope. Okay, I'm going to say the meeting is ended at eight thirty-one. We are over.